We, Special Services, held the position that we would begin Recovery Services discussions once school resumed in full. And I remain convinced that this was the right decision because OSBI changed their directions over the summer. And had we started last year, we may have been required to hold, repeat Recovery Services meetings for some families. The decision planning time was especially difficult. The Special Services team, Shereen Carver and myself and the rest of the directors, spent five or six months in deep conversation about how to build the very best plan we could offer the district. And we were asked to imagine a space-time continuum where COVID had never happened and come to a decision where students with disabilities should have been after 18 months of no school. We found this to be especially challenging in light of the fact that general education students and teachers were not held to this standard, and there is no such thing as a space-time continuum. And then to have school teams have to do something where no one has done it before and there's no algorithm allowed was very difficult to build a scaffold and a structure so that teams could decide how much recovery service time outside of school students needed to get on track. We eventually landed on what I think is an eloquent or a simple solution to this question. Did the students make expected progress or less-than-expected progress in both years? Additional to the recovery of expected progress or less-than-expected progress, we layered in unique family responses to the socio-political influences our community. In the packet that I sent you last night, the data portfolio shows a way to examine the first year of COVID, the springtime of full closure, and did the student make expected progress on their end-of-year report cards and progress monitoring data? And then how to follow the same path of data analysis through the following year, last year, and see how they did on their trimester grades, semester grades, or end-of-year progress monitoring? And with that data, they like take that together and say, does the student need recovery services because they did or did not make expected progress? And then layer on the family's unique experiences during COVID. It was not economically the same. Some families struggled in different ways. It was not socio-politically the same. Some families expressed in Recovery Services meetings that they felt afraid to leave their homes and that they had maybe multi-generational households where it wasn't safe for the student to go to school even if the student, him or herself, was okay to go to school. This framework, or we call it the sandbox, is the way to structure the plan so we could begin to build the workforce and schedule the student and the family. So on the pages in the packet that says the frameworks, it starts with ECE and it gives a plan for ECE because we spent a lot of time in a circular conversation, like a chicken in the egg. Where's the workforce? What does the student need? Where's the workforce? How much time do we need? And so we built just the biggest plan we could, we could think of. And it takes us all the way to the end of next summer schools, summer school time. And all of those times are available. So the recovery services needed to be offered outside of school unless the family said absolutely can't happen. And that's an important function of not inadvertently having the students spend more time in special education than their least restrictive environment would indicate. So we are offering Recovery Services meetings to every family. One of our directives was that families should not have to ask for this service, though we are offering it proactively to every family. And those meetings have been scheduled. Our aim is to have them all completed by the end of the first trimester, but the hard finish date is by the child's next naturally occurring IEP time. We have built what we call the sandbox of all the available minutes. So if a student needed a lot of recovery services, because the data indicated that they did, they could have recovery services after school, February break, spring break, and next summer. And if the student needed a little bit of recovery services, they could say, we want six to eight sessions of after-school on Tuesdays to work on writing. If the family knew regular school is very hard right now, and my child cries every day when they get off the school bus, they could say, we would like 10 sessions of recovery services, but we don't want to start until January. We want to give our child a little bit more time to just get their sea legs, so to speak, about school. To date, we have held over 250 meetings and feedback coming from families is that the conversation has been very helpful, and they really do appreciate the time to talk about it and think it through. Surprising to us, there has been a significantly higher number of families at the middle school and high school level who said, no, thank you, to the first indication of meeting. So teacher reached out and said, your child's eligible for Recovery Services meeting. Come on in and let's talk about it. And a larger-than-anticipated number of secondary parents said, no, thanks, we're good. Also surprising, a larger number than anticipated families went through the Recovery Services meeting process and came to a full offer of, this is what we believe your child needs to meet the recovery, and families declined the services. I believe that it is ultimately a family choice and they know their children better than, than we do. And if the family comes to that decision and we lock it in in a prior written notice in the student's documentation, it not only honors the family, the child, and the unique experiences of the long school closure, but also puts the district in a place where we have met the expectations of the state and we have had a discussion that's agreed upon, made a full offer, and parents have refused. We also continue to be alert to the capacity of the students. Or maybe rather, if more school on top of regular schools may be not wise or maybe not wise right now. And we are not very interested in offering recovery services in a virtual way. If virtual school last year was not successful and resulted in a less-than-expected progress, more of that doesn't seem to be in our integrity. That's all I have to say about recovery services. Do people have questions? And then I want to go on to some other special education topics.
Were there common themes in the why the services were declined?
So I don't have any common themes in the why of when the meeting was declined, just no thank you from the get-go. But I do see a little bit of, we actually found a tutor and it's, it's a relationship that our child is comfortable with. We're going to stick with the plan that our family made. Or it was Algebra II and that's a really hard class, so our family has actually just decided to repeat Algebra II as a class. So Recovery Services on Algebra II is probably less effective than just taking the whole class over again. I would say that there's not really a theme outside of math, just the, my child has enough going on and we are going to just naturally recover with our peers and, and just a no thank you.
On that as well, if a parent declines the Recovery Services meeting, can they, is that then, that's just it? Is that all documented and no other opportunities?
Yep, then it's done. I think at all times, school teams can respond to parents' requests for, hey, this isn't going quite right, and have an IP team or a teacher team discussion. But for the purposes of Recovery Services, the meeting has been offered, the amount has been offered, and the family has declined and it's captured in a private notice and put in a student's file.
Can they change their mind later on or no?
No, we're done.
Okay.
Have you looked at, is there any disproportionality of all the decline across the district? Is it secondary as far as like, is it certain race or gender or more politically geographic?
Sure. I think that until all the Recovery Services meetings have happened, it would probably be premature to make a decision on that. I can tell you that at the elementary level, zero families have declined the opportunity to meet and no one is declining offered Recovery Services. So it's really an age discrimination right now. But after the close of all the meetings or nearly all the meetings have been done, it'll be super easy to look at how, how it evolved over time and what the whole picture is. I was very surprised, that my team and I were very surprised to see the number of families refusing, not refusing, the, just, they're just not interested in the Recovery Services. And that's totally fine. It's family choice and we stand at the ready to serve our community, but it, it just took a spice price, wasn't what we expected.
Sure. I think I just would love, once you have all that data compiled, just to be able to see that.
Sure.
And sure that our outreach is effective across or ineffective across.
Sure. And the goal, the target is to have completed all the Recovery Services meetings by the end of the first trimester, which is early December, and we'll, we'll bring that back to you.
Thank you.
So my question is around students that are not taken. So if they're offered Recovery Services, let's say I'm a student and I have, in, I'm in the high school, I have seven classes. The Recovery Services are for something beyond that. So if they're feeling overwhelmed with just what they currently have, just to get through this year, these Recovery Services would be something on top of that, correct? Not necessarily support for where they're at beyond the school day?
Completely correct. It's outside of the school day, which is why in the framework we built February Break Camp, Spring Break Camp, and Next Summer Summer School. And it would have been a more anticipated, if my child was overwhelmed and just barely holding on in high school right now, I would say that Next Summer Summer School, families might have said, let's, let's say yes to that. There's no harm in saying yes to it now and then saying no to it later. But the, that's why there's the variety of choices, after-school, break camps, and next summer. And remember, I told you this last spring, that the students who are turning 22 this year, we did their Recovery Services last year because we had to have had the decision to extend their school year. And we have some students in the ACT program who are staying on for an extra year. The ACT programs Recovery Services are artfully done on Wednesdays, which is a no-student day for ACT. So they'll have Recovery Services starting for lost learning every Wednesday from 8:45 to 10 o'clock-ish. And they are very strategically placed against what was missed from last year. So they're almost all community outings. And so the ACT students, not only the ones turning 22, but the ones who are already there, staying there, their Recovery Services will be on Wednesdays throughout the year, which is a lovely way to capture at a time when they can, from a stamina standpoint, do more school. And I'm very excited that, that group starts mid-November.
And when you described the Recovery Meeting and what you sent to us, can you share what a strength-based structure is? Because I don't know what that means.
Sure.
Also, you mentioned about it's the full IEP team. So I'd be curious to know, I know those are hard to assemble in best of times, and I've heard even from our own board about how the challenges are. So I'd be curious to know, like what, how frequent were you guys able to assemble a full IEP team? And is that some of the barriers for secondary?
Sure. I would not say it was a barrier for middle schools or high school, and here is the why. In our ordinary bargain agreement, the school and teachers have Wednesday morning set aside for required meetings. So there's a required meeting, and we agreed that the school could use one of the Wednesdays for September and October and November and December for Recovery Services meetings. And if every principal and every team was operating, you could have two meetings each morning times five administrators. You could do 10 meetings each Wednesday morning of those required, and that's during the day, so everybody's there. I would not say I've had any teams say they could not assemble a full team. So one of the caveats for not having a full team is, say a student has related services with a therapist, and the therapist can't come to that meeting because they're at a different meeting or they're at a different school. They can send their material ahead of time and the parents can either excuse them or not excuse them. So the parents say, no, I actually really want to see the occupational therapist because I have this concern, the meeting would be rescheduled. So it is a full-team meeting, and that is definitely part of the challenge and the weight on the shoulders of the teachers right now. So that was the second question. The first question was, sure. Sure. Strength-based culture is near and dear to our hearts, which is to start with what the student does well rather than the student's deficits. So instead of starting with, you know, Dana's really bossy and she talks a lot and she interrupts a teacher and she needs to be right and have the last word, you would start with the strengths of the student. Like Dana's a leader. We see she's got a big vocabulary. She likes to impress people. You know, she works really hard with her classmates. So a strength-based system always starts with the student's strengths and attempts to locate, identify, and articulate what the student does well rather than focusing entirely on what they don't do well.
Thank you.
I don't want to underestimate the amount of work this has been and the integrity that we feel we are operating. And I do believe it puts the district in a place of good standing. And I have heard from families that it feels like a great conversation and they're really enjoying the opportunity to talk about how their child's going to come back into school and be successful. I think it's a good moment for our district to be a regional leader in this area, and I'm excited to get them finished and, and see how we can get the services underway. Any other questions about Recovery Services? I'll bring more back in January. That's all right with all of you. Talking about the workforce, I think this is the next thing I wanted to bring up. The, it was not, I anticipated that we would have a really hard time sourcing paraprofessionals and making sure that we had all the classified support staff in the building. So this summer, my team and I went to Mr. Cooper and said, we are just very worried about this. We're really worried about how many schools the kids change for the opening of the new schools and the new motility of the kids around the town. And we asked for some more support. And in the times of reductions, we knew that was a big ask and we needed it to be confident that we could deliver. So we got some more teaching time in the summer and we hired all those teachers. We are almost finishing, finished hiring and putting into place the therapists. So we have two more speech therapists that we are onboarding right now. They'll be on and going by the end of the month. We have one open position in occupational therapist. And, and I do think it's an important part of getting the kids the services they need by having contracts for the year because paraprofessionals have been, in fact, very hard to source. I ran the data before I came down and we have many open positions. I have it for you here in the paraprofessional ranks and very few applicants. So when we look at this workforce question with a strong certificated model, we have an opportunity to say, we have teachers in classrooms. We have teachers in classrooms with kids, and we have smaller class sizes in some places than we've had in the past. It also lines up with our values of inclusive practices and their sense of community, and the students should attend a school that's closest to their home and in their correct high school path. We have 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 18 open paraprofessional positions and probably six applicants in the pool for all of these positions. So the Special Services team has done what we call group hiring, where we'll take all the positions at an elementary level, talk to the principals and say, what are you looking for? And then we'll hire everyone or we'll interview everyone in the elementary paraprofessional pool and we'll match, we'll match the person, say, which region do you want to work in? Approximately how many hours a day would you like to work? And then we do some matching and we offer positions based on interviewee choice and open positions. And it has allowed us to see the whole picture at once and do some more successful matching pretty efficiently. Very recently, we did middle school interviews and had five interviews and placed four people, and that was a real successful day. The opening of two new schools and the amount of new work, we anticipated trying to confirm building attendance, and it continues to change, especially at the elementary level. It is very difficult to make strategic decisions on data that keeps moving in front of my eyes. In fact, so many changes at the elementary level have happened this month that the office professional team is running me new class lists for October mid-month just to make sure we're doing the very best we can for kids and teachers. Additionally, families who are in progress in special education evaluations are all being finished right now. And so we are having just an explosion of students who are newly qualified and trying to get all of their paperwork in order and get them placed well. It is a, it is a bit of a moving target at the elementary level and it creates a new challenge. I also want to make sure that we know that the overall school district numbers are less, but special education numbers are holding steady. So the P223 for Special Services was at 1,621 on October 1st. Last June, it was 1,641. So I want to prepare you that our percentage of students served in special education has always been around that eight and a half or nine and a half percent mark. If the overall number of students in the district comes down by a substantial amount and special education students stay the same, by simple math, the percentage is going to go up. I anticipate on the November 1 account, it'll be over 10%, which isn't typical for us. But I just wanted to alert you to the why behind that. Another goal for our school year this year is to gently press forward inclusive practices and specifically work on the pillar of inclusive practices of community. Building strong connections to school and community is more important now than ever. And I think returning the students served in the LRC2 programs to their homeschool path and returning ECE students to their closest schools and evidence of this. And I am very excited to say that it's been a successful venture and also need you to know that it is not balanced. So the Holly Street preschool program is much larger than the Discovery Program, and we're going to have to respond to that. I remain convinced that it's the right thing to do for kids and families who live in the corridor, that they go to a school that's closest to their home and in their community, and they follow the path with their classmates and their peers and their neighborhood friends. For example, the Holly Street campus has twice the number of the students in the Discovery Program, and the Apollo LRC2 program has close to 20 students, and the Cedar Trail Building LRC2 program has five. So it's just very different. And so we made a choice, and I think it's the right choice, but it doesn't come without consequences that we have to have good numbers to work with and leverage our resources around the district for an equity standpoint and not just in numbers. Two more goals I want to talk to you about. We have a goal area in the area of the teaching of reading. We've been studying the outcomes of our reading instruction even pre-COVID, and the elements we saw just showed us that that was a place that we could spend some energy and work on improving our practices. Inclusive practices, a strong core curriculum, and strategic teaching of reading, and the professional development is underway, but we know we have much work to do in this area. We have close to 100 staff members trained in the Orton-Gillingham dyslexia work as one example, but we have many more ideas that I hope to bring back student achievement results for you in a few months and in the years to come about where our students are going in the area of learning, reading. Universal Design and MTSS is another part of our work, and I would love for you to look at the graphic I gave you earlier. That MTSS and universal design is an important piece, and I wanted you to see this triangle in a new way. And the way that this triangle is different than maybe when you see it in a two-dimensional way is there's universal supports and is often in green and it's at the bottom of the triangle, and it talks about, we think our universal supports are the things we do for all kids will meet the needs of 85% of the students. And then they have this construct of tier two, and they say tier two is a strategic intervention that helps, you know, 15 or more percent. And then there's the tier three, which is the top of the tier. The graphic I've given you is there to just help you remember that you don't stop doing tier one interventions when you add tier two, and you don't stop doing tier two interventions when you add tier three. So students don't actually jump. We add and layer and make it more complex. If we follow the medical model of, of an intervention, prevention is cheaper and more successful than postvention. And if we follow the, say, the flu, the flu prevention, if we want all, all people, especially kids, to wash their hands and cough into their elbow, but then you get a flu shot. A flu shot is a tier two intervention. You wouldn't stop washing your hands and coughing into your elbow when you get a flu shot. And then even if you get a flu shot, sometimes you still get the flu and you need to have a couple of days off and some rest. So the idea of the multi-tiered interventions, wanting you to have that as your nugget for today, that it's layering on more, it's not stopping the one you did before. So MTSS is a super exciting launch for us. We're very excited about the eye-ready and working with teaching and learning and, and seeing how that works all together to move the system forward. We shared at the end of last year and at the beginning of this year that we in Special Services anticipate this year being more difficult than last, and this is proving to be precisely true. The pressure is palatable in the buildings and our fragile house of cards is still standing. We also have deep conviction, deep conviction that this is our time to shine. My patient isn't, patience isn't always in my strong suit. I am confident that we built you a solid plan and we just need to keep the course and keep going forward and hold on to the truth that it's very difficult to be in Special Services right now, and we just keep trucking. So any questions about MTSS or the pillars of inclusive practices that we're continuing or any other questions that I might be able to answer?
So in the pandemic, we know that it's really impacted our youngest learners, especially they're kind of like staying away from all sorts of even like the initial early learning type things. I'm curious what that has been, the impact in child find? And I know in bigger school districts, just being able to access the therapist to do the evaluation has created huge backlogs. So here's in Iskwa, what's the impact been?
Yeah. So child find and the preschool program are part of my newest learning, and I'm so excited about what we are about to do in the world of early intervention and preschool and becoming a regional, like shiny star of program. So if you recall, the first summer of COVID, we negotiated a deal that school psychologists could come in and in one-on-one testing in this building, continue to do evaluations. So we didn't get so far behind. That proved to be successful and we were not like super far behind. We had some catching up to do in September. But we did the same thing this past summer about all the child find preschool evaluations for families that were honestly staying home for a while and then finally went in for their, you know, well-child pediatric checkup, and then they came in. And so we had a number of days throughout the summer to make sure that we didn't have a logjam in September where we just couldn't actually process all the requests. So we just sort of, steady as you go through the summer, and that is, I believe, why Holly Street has twice as many students as Discovery has right now. The numbers at Discovery in Briarwood are more typical for September, but Holly Street has almost a full class. That said, the Special Services Department has a pretty rich investment in a child find team with an existing child find team. So we have a team and that is their purpose. That's what they do, instead of pulling them from other tasks or other schools to, to make it happen. This year, for example, the Iskwa School, this summer, the Iskwa Schools Foundation funded a grant to buy the vision screener, the, the one that the kids hold up to their face, for Holly Street exclusively so that nurse doesn't have to go track it down from somewhere else. So we're really building the biggest and the best child find program for the preschools. So we are not currently facing a backlog. We just have a lot of kids. And the Bridge to K class, the Bridge to kindergarten class is full. It has the oldest preschoolers that are gearing up for kindergarten. And last year, it was a January to June program. It was so successful this year, it's a September to June program. So the Bridge to K students are in the Bridge to K class all year, and that created a few seats, a few open seats in the, the other classrooms. But the, the Holly Street campus is going to be a very exciting thing. It's going to be fantastic. We have on the topic of preschool in the changes of the WAC. It's one of the things that I follow and make sure that we're keeping abreast of all the changes. The, one of the WACs on preschool is going to be the expanding of general education access. So students with disabilities in preschool having access to preschool peers while they're at school. At Holly Street, of course, we have the community preschool and we also have the ECAP program that will be there eventually. At Briarwood, there is an ECAP program and a preschool program, but we will be growing into that with greater access to typically developing preschool-aged peers in all of our preschool programs district-wide. I do think that our preschool program is going to hit a bubble, and I think there's going to be more students entering preschool that aren't just turning three right now. I think families are still waiting at home a little bit just to see how school goes. It is only the 1st of October, the middle of October, but I think as we get closer to families feeling more comfortable and maybe the child vaccine coming out, more families will come and say, okay, now we're ready. But I think we're going to see a lot of preschoolers in the preschool program this year. I do not believe we have at this time a backlog waiting to get in.
And then my second question, thank you, is since I think the state, maybe I'll say this wrong, is a deficit-based how they do identification in these early grades? And since we see kids that are coming into third grade who have had very little in-class learning potentially, are you seeing a higher percentage of referrals to be evaluated for possible, for Special Services?
Sure. I understand your question. And yes, the state currently has a deficit model, which is the common language is way to fail. You know, the, they, the student has to be a certain number of years or grades behind before they can be evaluated for Special Services. That is true. That is true. The Washington State, Washington State is taking us away from that. And by twenty twenty-eight, it will be an MT, MTSS or RTI model. But for right now, we have a deficit model to work with. We always see a jump in third grade. If we were to track even pre-COVID for the five years before COVID and how many students per grade are in special education. We would always see a jump in third grade. And right now we are at six weeks or so into the school year, which is the data bright line that we usually give people and like, you need to collect some data for about six weeks and then come talk to us. I would expect that there's a, a bit of a flurry of families who are attempting to be moving towards a special education referral. That said, our school psychologist team built a matrix last year to really hone in on what is a COVID impact? And what is a learning impact? And so they're being super cautious about making sure they don't jump too quickly to special education because that would be, you know, counter to our disproportionality goals. But also that we support kids through the MTSS structure, like what is good for all kids? Might be good for your kid. And how quickly can we get the most tier two instructions for your kid before we get to a special education referral? I wouldn't be surprised though, if you were to ask me that question in six more weeks. Though we don't have some families that are, are underway in the quest for a special education evaluation.
I guess my question is on the sourcing of paraeducators. And I don't, I guess I'd love to understand, is it a particular certification? That's required for paraeducators and special services? And if yes, is there a path or an approach for paraeducators in a different, serving a different function today to obtain that certification and potentially play that role?
Sure. It's an entry level job and we do all of the fundamental course of study, which is the certification for paraprofessionals once they become hired. So there's nothing ahead of time. They need to, employees need to be eighteen high school graduate and have a CPR card and a vaccination by next week. But there's not a pre-existing certification problem. I think it would parallel what is happening everywhere about the workforce. The, I, I know that there, there are help wanted signs in many windows. I know that even my own eye doctor said he has to scale back on his appointments because he doesn't have the front office support. And he can't seem to keep people in those positions. So our neighbors, I think the HR department here would share that our neighboring school districts are reporting much the same. There's just open positions everywhere. And so I tell everyone, put it on your Facebook. It, it just has to be everywhere that people need to know that we are welcoming people into the profession. And we will provide the training, the fundamental courses of study and all of those pieces come with the job. But it's super important that we get the help into the classrooms to support the teachers and the kids as they need it. But it is a universal problem throughout our whole region and not just in education. Tell your friends.
Any other questions?
Okay. Thank you.
Oh, wait, you have more? Oh, well, go for it.
So for the second, second question I would want you to ask is like, if money was no object, like you're very strategic in your thinking, which is amazing. What would you dream of us being able to do for our students? But the first question I have is my dream. Is that we have a better way to access for our parents to access and engage with special services? I think there's one thing that I've heard consistently over the past six years. Is that there are many special services parents who feel like they don't have the ability to advocate for their students in a non in a more collegial way, where it's not adversarial. And that's I think what we all would want as a parent. And I know there's lots of reasons and barriers and challenges and also know you're new to the role. So but I, I feel like our district hasn't had that engagement with the, the parent community of special services that I would like to see. And it'd be a common theme that our superintendent would hear me say it's not just social services, it'd be our, you know, highly capable parents, it would be our ELL parents. So I asked, so it's, it's, what I'm asking of you is the same thing I want for every parent group across our district. But I feel that's been an omission in special service for at least the past four years, long predating.
Sure. I'd like to approach that question in two ways. And the first one has to do with the IEP meeting. So the IEP meeting is the annual structured opportunity for teams to come together with parents. And we have heard also that families feel either that it's a rubber stamp time, like school's gonna tell the parents what we want to do and you get to, to agree. Like we're, we're inviting you to the process where we invite you to come to the meeting where we're going to tell you what we want to do and you're going to agree. So that's one real genuine concern we've heard sort of throughout the past two years that I've been here. And the other one is that a concern that when families give input ahead of the IEP time, not all of the family input makes it into the IEP under parent concerns. So it looks to families that it is strategic that the teachers take out what they don't want in there. And therefore the IEP that's driven by the parent concerns matches what the teacher has already filtered. To that end, we have scheduled, you're just a perfect question, starting in January, the idea of having some listening sessions with parents to make sure we really understand all of the how it feels to be in an IEP meeting from all ages of families, different varieties of families, from different cultures. And do a couple of listening sessions. And I targeted Dr. Jameson Moore, one of our newly hired directors to lead that charge because he's new. He comes in with no previous Iskwa experience, you know, lead the charge of the listening sessions. So that we can mold our IEP meeting practices to be truly collaborative and a genuine partnership with parents because that's our goal as well. So that was our first, does my first answer is, we have heard the same. I don't disagree. And we have a plan to start with the most personal annual opportunity, which is the IEP meeting. The second part I would say is special education students are part of the district. They're general education students first. And so quietly, we are going about putting them in that place, like they are a member of that community, as a member of that community. As a whole person in the school of Pacific Cascade Middle School. And so making sure that they are visible in the data, they're visible in the activities. They are proportionately visible in all of the activities that happen in all of our school buildings and the clubs and activities, et cetera. And then being ready to say, what do you need to be successful to participate, your most fully self in those opportunities that are offered to all students at your school? Example, it's cross-country time. Cross-country is a great sport if you like running, but it's also super social. And there's no cuts. So it's a great sport for students who maybe have been shy to try a group thing like that. How do they get home? If they aren't able to take the activity bus at the middle school level, we need to solve that problem. That's equitable. We need to say, if you can't take the regular activity bus because you're normally transported in special transportation, we need to figure out a way to get special transportation back to school at four thirty to take you home. Because that's an equity lens to the after-school activities. Another example might be to take a look at the electives that students are asking for at the high school. And saying, how do we build in the supports for all kids to be possible to say, I actually want to take photography. I take a cooking. I don't want to take cooking. I want to take this other thing over here. Gets back to the paraprofessional question. How do we have the sports in all the places for you to be? Very excited to work with the CTE department to think about alternate paths to graduation through the two-year CTE opportunity. And that's going to take the parents because everybody needs to know how we're going to make that happen, if that's going to be the graduation path. To say you, you need to now stick it out. We picked this path for your graduation. It's all a part of the communication and making sure that everyone understands from the get-go, what's the goal? And so those are my two best ideas for you right now. It's on my mind and it's part of our discussion as a special education department. And we would like, as the new websites roll out in the middle of the year, we would really working hard at analyzing in our current site, what gets clicked? What are people looking for when they go to our current site and make sure that we build the very best models of those closest to the top, so to speak, of our new website? So that parents don't have to fish for information. Does that make sense?
You didn't, you didn't answer what your dream was though, too.
Oh, I, I am very good at spending other people's money. I would say that really, really digging into inclusive practices at the preschool level. More transition K, more inclusion at the kindergarten and first grade level. I think digging in deep to the reading, the reading instruction, like if we could double down on reading instruction in the next five years, we would notice a big difference. I think I feel guilt about the resources. I mean, we're truly appreciative that the resources that the district has offered our department in the middle of cuts. That it is, it's, it's an impossible situation right now to be in a space-time continuum where COVID never happened for students with disabilities. And they're being held to this imaginary status. I think having students in their homeschool, which will be more expensive, is a stronger model of community than having even our magnet programs that are, that are they're closest, they're closer to their home, but it's not their home. I think moving towards more inclusive practices where there's more co-taught classes, where students are middle school and high school getting the benefit of a highly certified language arts and math teacher versus the pullout program where they, they get direct instruction at a totally appropriate level, but they miss something, like everything has a cost. So deep investment in the preschool and the early grades. I think the summer school model that we ran last year was spectacular and I would love to do it again and, and measure the results. Getting more inclusive practices and having kids in their homeschool. And if you ask me that in another month, I'll even have more ideas. But I, I do think it's really exciting to layer the equity framework on top of our work. And say, how do I get to a yes? What's it going to take for me to get to a yes? So that your child can go to cross-country even though they need special transport.
Thank you. I am so grateful for your leadership. You know, I think that special services, at least when I started six years ago, seemed to be more a box the district was checking. And it was just focused on like, oh, we're in compliance with state mandates. And I really feel like you through this approach is, is really like, how do we meet the needs of the students and the families where they're at?
So. Compliance is super important. So we're still checking that box. But we also believe in saying yes as often as we can get to for the betterment of the students and making sure that they feel and are present in their community. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. And it's, I might be speaking today, but it's me and the whole team. It's all of us.
So I have a couple. So my first one is around, you know, as you're moving for inclusive practices and you were very much talking about a lot of that at the, at the beginning time. But I think for me, my concern is that we already have kids that are, a lot of kids that are probably like eighty percent gen ed. But they do have services that they're supposed to be getting. And, and so I'm wondering about PD for those for, for our gen ed teachers, because every one of them have students with IEPs or 504s and sometimes the services your student get is dependent on how committed those teachers are to actually following those.
Sure. I think that is a, it's a, it's woven. So you have a strong special education department. You have a strong special education teacher. You have a really well-written IP that leads into the student's classroom experience. You have strong teaching happening on the gen ed side of the house and whatever content area they're going. And you have a principal who's got the vision that everybody does in fact belong, you know, in that classroom. Any one of those places could take a dip on any given day, me included. I could have a day where I make a bad decision and I was like, okay, I have to course correct that. I was at Maywood this week for a faculty meeting to talk about universal design. And I think that strengthening everyone's understanding of universal design is going to be a great move forward. And at the same time, I'm holding a sense of realism about what's actually happening in schools right now with all the COVID mitigation factors and how hard everything is right now for COVID. So the long-range plan would be to continue training all co-teaching partnerships in how to be strong co-teaching teams. Long-range plan would be to continue to really strengthen our paraprofessional ranks and get them masterful paraprofessionals to be the co-teaching partner. And continuing to make sure that everybody has what they need to be their most successful self in a very unpredictable situation. I can't actually tell you how many kids go to Clark who have an IP right now because that number changes every day. So that's what I said earlier about the, the motility of students right now is unprecedented for me. And trying to figure out how to put my resources where my resources need to be. That said, you're not wrong that there's the compliance piece of what the child has in their IP they are supposed to get. Sometimes even that doesn't happen and an innovation, an innovative teacher can also take it to the moon. And it's very hard. That's why not everybody wants to be a special ed teacher.
And then I had a question, this, and this isn't like from a long time ago, but I remember I served on a task force by, from OSPI that was committed towards students who, you know, what was happening after high school. And so there was a kind of a whole bunch of us that were meeting. And one of the things that we really talked about was DVR was just had been devastated financially. So I, I wanted to get an understanding of DVR's involvement in like transition services, especially for students that may not be going to act. But are looking, because I remember my son's transition meeting, I didn't even know it was his transition meeting. It's like, oh, well, this is the one where he's turning sixteen. And I'm like, so we didn't prepare for this? We didn't have a conversation around? That was the purpose of this meeting. It, to me, it was just, we use the annual meeting to also be a transition meeting.
Sure. And I might want to bring some of that back with a little bit more research. We do, with a little bit more research on my part. We do have a contract with Highline Community College for the ACHIEVE program for students who need one more year of learning, but not another year of high school. We do have a contract with the School to Work DVR organization to make sure we're transitioning our students well. But really what you're speaking about tags on to what Dr. Gallenter said, which is the IEP meeting at that time, the transition meeting. It's important and I don't know that, that we do a great job prepping families for that. And I think it would be a great place to grow. Right now, last night and next Wednesday, we are in the middle of our series of parent education that we run. And the one that's next Wednesday is financial planning for parents who have significant disabilities. So we have a lot of fingers in that work. But I'd love the opportunity to pull together a cohesive answer for you about that transition through exiting school. As well as the Center for Change Seattle University Leavers research that they do every year to bring back like, where are the kids one year after high school? And two years after high school? So if you'll let me put a pin in that, I'll come back with a, a much better answer.
Absolutely. That's fine.
So this has been great. I think we're actually out of time. Thank you very much, Dr. Bailey, for that presentation and board for all the good questions. And can we take a quick two-minute break before we go into the real meeting? We're good? Okay. Good evening and welcome to this meeting of the Issaquah School Board for October 14th, 2021. And can we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? The Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Thank you very much. We had a slightly late start, but we're on a roll now. And the first item for a change is student input. And Director Moore, did you want to introduce our students from Issaquah High?
Well, certainly. I haven't had an opportunity to chat with them, but I know that from Issaquah High School, we have Hannah Chang and Danielle Levin. And I think they're both there on Zoom. So, we'll let you guys go ahead and unmute yourself. And I don't know if Stephen needs to let them unmute themselves and have you guys go ahead and give your student input. We appreciate having you here.
Hi. My name is Danielle Levin. I'm a senior at IHS. I use they/them pronouns and I'm the ASB Vice President. And as far as kind of what's happening at school, lately, we've been really focused on homecoming and creating an experience that's both like safe and also fun for students to kind of try and create like a balance. We decided to book the Seattle Aquarium for the night and we're hosting an event there. It's IHS students only, but it kind of allows for an alternate experience that's not like as close contact as a dance. And then we've also been doing what we're calling the Connection Week, which is kind of a week of like giving back to students. We've been giving out some free stuff like hot chocolate and waffles in the mornings. We put like encouraging notes around the school and like body positive stuff on the mirrors. And we're encouraging people to drop off notes with kind messages on them that we're going to deliver to their classes. And then as far as some things I've noticed that I think could be improved is focus on student mental health. I think that the transition has been going really well, a lot better than I was expecting after like just going through COVID, which was crazy for everyone. But I think that students are kind of struggling with still like balancing the like trauma that may not have been processed from going through a global pandemic and trying to balance kind of like a normal school schedule. So, it's hard to kind of find like a middle ground between the two. And I think that the school and school district response to student mental health issues is really good. I think it's just hard because there aren't a lot of ways to tell like when something like that is happening. So, my idea to fixing that would be making more paths for students to kind of like report stuff and create safe spaces because you can't really help if you don't know something is happening. But overall, I think that things are going pretty well. And yeah, Hannah, do you have stuff to say?
First of all, just to introduce myself, my name is Hannah Chang. I'm also a student at Issaquah High in the ASB class. I'm a junior this year and my pronouns are she/her. Just to add on to what Danielle said, definitely homecoming, we're excited about that. And our class has been working super hard to obviously fit the COVID-19 guidelines and really excited that we got to book such an amazing venue. And Connection Week has also been an amazing opportunity, kind of different than normal Spirit Weeks where we're asking for a lot, but just us as a class giving to the student body. Some things that I wanted to discuss were, I know one of the challenging things that we as a class in ASB struggled with at first was assemblies. When fitting the COVID-19 guidelines assemblies, you can imagine trying to fit the entire student body in kind of one area or organizing an event to kind of, kind of communicate and like also think of fun events while fitting all those guidelines were challenging. But we definitely learned from our first Welcome Back Assembly. And we just really realized the main thing is communication within our own class and trying to communicate with the student body on what their needs are, like what they enjoyed. So, we noticed some things that really worked well were the choices of wanting to come to the assembly and also inputting like band cheer, dance and stuff because we've been away for so long from those actual in-person experiences. Incorporating band cheer and dance has also been great. So, when we learned that those were core things that worked well, our upcoming Homecoming Assembly, we're definitely going to incorporate most of those details in that assembly. Another thing was, I also agree with Danielle on the mental health of the student body at our school and how the only thing that we can really do is try and find a solution of ways to report that because it is hard, definitely coming from a year off online. And then I noticed that with me, my friends, just everyone around us, trying to get back to that normal like in-person, even just the timing of going to school, maintaining and organizing like all your material and making sure you're on top of your work habits has been a bit different. So, making sure there's ways to kind of communicate and report those kind of stressors would be a lot of help.
Okay. Thank you very much, both of you, for your input. Please feel free to stick around during the meeting and ask questions or comment on any of the agenda items. You can just raise your virtual hand and we will call on you just like we would board members. I do understand at some point you may need to head off and do homework or other student-y things, but we would love to have you participate in the meeting as long as you possibly can. So, feel free to stay on the Zoom and thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public input. And before I go to the public, I believe I have Elena Sivadossen, our Director of Equity, Executive Director of Equity, excuse me.
So, while Elena's coming up, I might just add, yes, Elena Sivadossen is here for a very special ancestral land acknowledgement. And I know the board and many others have been at conferences or in meetings that begin with the land acknowledgement. And we thought that it would be appropriate for us here in the Issaquah School District to recognize and honor the history of our local tribes, the Snoqualmie tribe, and which has had a very collaborative and positive relationship with us as well. So, thank you, Elena, for doing this. And you've done it for our administrative team and the like. And I know you're training folks to be able to do land acknowledgements throughout the district. So, this is a great opportunity for us to have a land acknowledgement tonight. And before she starts, I just wanted to welcome our students, our first set of students for the year as well for the 2120 school year. And I just had to say thank them and their classmates for the acts of kindness that I heard referenced in their input. So, just wanted to slide that in. Thank you, Elena.
Can you hear me now?
Ooh, better. Thank you.
Thank you for, Executive Director Elena Sivadossen. Thank you for the opportunity to share the land acknowledgement tonight. I also did want to give credit to Dawn Harper and Lena Jones, who both work within the Teaching and Learning Department, who have helped create this land acknowledgement in collaboration with the tribe. And most people, when they have heard a land acknowledgement, it's mainly just verbal in nature, but we have created one that is very visual with verbal for a couple of reasons. One, it's just more authentic that way and it's something that the tribe was very invested in. And also, it helps us when, with our plan of doing land acknowledgements K-12, it helps our younger students also access the information and connect to, to the land acknowledgement. And land acknowledgements have been done for centuries by many native nations and communities. And it's just a way of recognizing the original stewards of the land that we live on. So... We want to begin by acknowledging the first people of this land since time immemorial. By doing so, we can better understand the history, present and future existence of the land and people of this area. As we engage in this work, we ask that you reflect on your own place in time and space. Since the beginning of time or since time immemorial, the indigenous people have called this area home. They are called Snoqualmie, a Lushoot seed name, meaning the Transformers people. And where the salmon spawned. They lived under the shadows of the mountains. And the canopy of the trees. And the shores of the lakes that dotted the land. Over time, people began to immigrate and settle on this land the Snoqualmie called home. These immigrants were drawn by the natural resources such as coal, timber, and fertile farmland. The settlers forever changed the way of life and the land for the indigenous people. But the indigenous people continue to live in the lands they have always called home. They are not separate from these lands and waters. As more people immigrated to this land, townships were established. Some grew so much as to be called a city like Issaquah. Although many things have changed since the beginning of time, the Snoqualmie peoples' relationship with this land remains foundational. They still live along the rivers where the salmon spawn, under the shadows of the mountains and the canopies of the trees and the lakes that dot the land. We acknowledge that we are on the indigenous land of Coast Salish peoples who have reserved treaty rights to this land, specifically the Snoqualmie Indian Tribe. We thank these caretakers of this land who have lived and continue to live here since time immemorial.
Thank you, Elena, and your partner there that was helping you out, too.
Yeah. Thank you very much. That was, that was extremely interesting. Okay. We will now move to regular public input. Public input is for input on items not on the regular meeting agenda. So, if you have input relating to a specific agenda item, please hold your comments until we reach that agenda item. The rules of public input are clearly state your name and school attendance area. Please limit your comments to two minutes. And my timekeeper over here will beep at you through the microphone. The board does not respond to public input, however, we do listen and take note of it. We neither endorse nor censor any opinions expressed in public input. Please keep all items, all comments civil and respectful. And I have public input from the room and possibly from the Zoom. So, I will start with Kristin Miller, who is in the room. And if you can go up there, the microphone should be on and you can see the timer. So, give your name and attendance area and take it away.
Okay. And secondly, last week, there was an issue with a child who was masturbating publicly in the classroom. I don't know where the teacher was, but other students videotaped him doing this, sent the videos out, and the majority of the school saw the videos. Uh, the principal held a meeting last week. And at that meeting, I raised this issue as to why parents were not notified about this and why the child was back in school two days later. She assured me the child was not back in school, that my daughter was mistaken, and that he was not in her class, only to call me 10 minutes after the meeting ended, saying that she lied and that the child was back in school, but there was nothing she could do that he deserved an education. Masturbating in public is illegal. Masturbating around my 14-year-old daughter is a crime. Today, I talked to Jason, I believe Morris, and he told me that they couldn't tell me what they were doing, but that they were doing things to ensure the safety of the kids in the classroom. As a mandated reporter, the principal should have called the police. I am a social worker and have been a social worker for 20 years, working with sexually aggressive youth. And this child should be evaluated. And there was absolutely no way that he was evaluated and that professionals looked at him and they deemed him safe to be around the kids at the school. When kids, when there's violence at schools, people say, where are the warning signs? What happened? We have a child that's from another culture, who has acted out aggressively in class for the last three years, who curses out his teacher and other students. He's now sexually acting out in class. Something has to be done.
Okay, thank you very much for your input. Um, and I will just remind people that um, we are not at liberty to discuss um, student discipline or staff discipline for that matter. I know it's very unsatisfying, but just because you're not aware that a student has been disciplined doesn't mean it hasn't happened. And I won't say anything more because I don't, I don't have information on this specific is, issue, but I just wanted to um, give that reminder. Uh, do I have public input on the Zoom? I can't see my hands. Okay. I'm sorry. Oh. Okay, Tori, yeah, I was having trouble reading that. I'm sorry, Tori Bernstein. If you could, oh, there you are. You're way ahead of me. Um, can she unmute? Or can we unmute her? There you go.
Hi, I'm Tori Bernstein, the PBSCS coach at Pine Lake Middle School. I'm also the parent of an Issaquah High School senior. Um, I just wanted to talk on behalf of all the staff um, in the Isaguas School District and just remind the school board that we have had staff cuts, um, especially in the counseling and dean AP positions. Um, on Tuesday, we had a principal who was in a district training and one counselor. Um, and that was it for 900 students. Um, most administrators and teachers are too tired to come to these meetings. Um, I'm a point five, and so I'm just speaking on behalf of all the people that are really asking for their voices to be heard and for help. We do not have enough adult supervision. Um, there is behavior escalating, there are emotional um, issues that are escalating, and we are just highly, highly understaffed to serve the needs of um, the teachers that are struggling and the students that are struggling. Um, and I have an amazing staff and um, amazing leadership in our school. Um, so I'm just concerned about where uh, we're headed throughout the year. And I'm just asking you to hear our voices um, and please reinstate some of our positions to provide additional support. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, is there any other public input um, from the Zoom? Last chance. Okay, seeing none, uh, we are going to move on. I've lost my agenda. Uh, we are down to the consent agenda, and I believe we have some changes.
Yes, um, thank you, President Weaver. I, I do have an item that I would like to walk on to the consent agenda. I would like to add a contract for a CEPA lead official. Um, as the board knows, we made the decision to redo our high school four elementary 17 CEPA or our Providence Heights property after reviewing and going through the comment period from the, the previous CEPA process that we've been involved in for this site. Uh, I have also made the decision to hire an outside expert consultant to be our lead CEPA official as my designee. This uh, contract is with EA Engineering Science and Technology Incorporated and Mr. Rich Shipensky. He is the manager of planning and environmental review. Rich will serve as my designee CEPA lead official going forward. Um, and I just want the board and the community to know that we are committed to having a very thorough and transparent CEPA process. That's in part why we've re, re, we're redoing this process um, after the initial public comment period. Uh, we certainly look forward to working with Rich to accomplish this goal of transparency and thoroughness. So thank you for your consideration.
Okay, thank you. Um, do I have a motion?
Before that, can I?
Sure.
Can I request that we pull EL3 uh, off the consent agenda?
Okay. Now, your motion's got longer. Okay, because any uh, yeah, I didn't give the consent agenda spiel, but, and now it's not showing up. Yes, um, consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board prior to the meeting, and any board member may review an item from the consent agenda and place it on the regular agenda. So we will do that with um, EL3. And now do I have a motion? That part. Go for it.
Okay. I move the consent agenda be approved with out EL3. And one additional item that has as its motion language, I move the board approve the personal services contract CEPA responsible official services agreement slash contract between the Isaguas School District and EA Engineering Science and Technology.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Oppose? Okay, motion passes.
Thank you.
Now, regular agenda, we want to, can EL3 come after EL8? Okay, does that work for you superintendent?
Yep.
Okay, so are there any other changes to the regular agenda?
There are none.
Okay. Uh, so it has been um, three weeks since our last official board meeting. However, the board's been extremely busy during that time, and we have actually four different items to report out on. Um, so let's start with um, a quick recap of our work study, which was um, a meeting with Assistant Superintendent Dana Bailey regarding the Special Education Recovery Plan. Would anybody like to comment?
I'm happy to get started. I, I think, um, so it was a, it was a very good update. It's really good to get a sense of how we're executing on the plan. I think for me, it's just important to remember that last year, while we were still in last school year, the amount of thought and planning that was put in place um, to ensure that we had a good special services plan in place coming into the year that we could execute um, quickly at the start of the school year. Um, I think it's just really important pre-work and shouldn't be lost in, in the conversation as we um, as the group is moving through all the conversations with uh, families on their special services needs. So for me, it's just a really good reminder of the proactive nature of um, of planning for, for these discussions that we knew would be needed once we get everybody back uh, in school this year.
Great, thank you. Any other comments? Marnie?
I thought it was good to get an update. Not only what is being done for the recovery, but the program as a whole. Um, you know, our executive director came in just the year of COVID and the, and the stoppage in the, in the end of the school year. So really her, she still has work to do with her organization and trying to get that, that done. And so I appreciated having an opportunity to hear not only about the recovery, but goals that go beyond that. Um, and even how we're addressing the recovery showed very much signs of her leadership and the changes and how she wants to implement the program going beyond just compliance-based, but really seeking to meet the needs of students and families. And um, I was deeply encouraged by the conversation.
I couldn't agree more. You know, I, I think that rather than seeing the recovery services as a one more thing, I really feel like under her leadership, social services is leveraging this as an opportunity to engage with our families and to uh, provide better services for our students.
Well, I thought it was exciting to hear what, what you, you know, what, what, when Harlan asked, you know, what would you really want, of all things? But just that the, the robustness of the early learning program and the number of kids that were able to get into that. And as she continues to hope to get more kids into that, to support them so that they are off to the right start in our K-12 school. So to me, that was really exciting uh, work that's going on.
Yeah, I think as we all know, it was um, certainly challenging to provide educational services during the pandemic in a remote model. And I think it was especially challenging for special services. So um, the fact that we have a repub, a recovery plan that is so robust um, gives me hope that we are going to meet the needs of those students. And I should add, since we're going to morph into the next agenda item, which is a report out on the board retreat, that um, one of the big conversations the board had during its retreat was on educational recovery plans overall. And we decided that special education portion um, would be more worthwhile to have in a work-study session since um, the public was more likely to hear it. And of course, it would be recorded for future viewing. So, Marnie?
I just had something else. It wasn't really a question that I would direct at um, at the Director of Special Services, but rather to the superintendent. She was mentioning um, the Holly Street Campus is what she kept calling it. And I thought, is that considered a school? And does it deserve a name and a mascot and that whole process that the school board goes through?
It's a great question, Director Meraldo. And, and maybe, maybe the answer is yes. I, I, I know we haven't, I don't believe it is technically classified as a separate school um, right now. But you know, it's, if it, it's kind of walking like a duck and talking like a duck. So uh, we have administrative, we have, we, we have a site uh, coordinator um, that's in charge over there as well. So I don't know, I'll have to look into that and have some further conversations because uh, we're super proud, obviously, of all the, the work that's going on over there. And there's, as you know, there's also remodeling work going on over there right now too. So they're, they're doing all that great work in the midst of a construction project as well. But I'll have to get back to you on whether or not uh, it, it, it's a school and maybe does it really matter if we want it to be that? Um, so because yes, I have to say uh, the, it, it was not super creative, but we needed to call it something. And I said, well, why don't we call it the Holly Street Campus? So uh, but uh, it's, it does house quite a, a number of diverse programs there. So I don't know, that's a great question. I'll have to get back to you on.
I was just thinking, if I was a three or four-year-old, would it sound exciting? You're going off to the Holly Street Campus.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, I'm actually thinking more from the standpoint of, I would imagine that a, a vast portion of the community has no idea what we're doing at that campus. They think, oh, that's the old admin building. They may not even know there are students in there. So if we sort of upgraded it to school status, um, would just give a little more um, notice, credibility to um, what's going, to the great work that's going on there. So it's something we might look at, although I don't know that it has like a principle or anything.
No, we do have, we do have uh, staff assigned to oversee it. Um, and again, of course, we're running our, our BASK program management um, is out of there as well. Um, so we do have a few eclectic, our Child Find is there, our, and our pro preschool program, so. Um, but it sure looks and feels like a school when you're there. We have a playground over there now. And uh, so, and at some point too, we can uh, rededicate the facility when the construction is over and maybe, maybe a new name and some other fun things can come with it at that time too. So, yeah.
Okay, um, so anything else on the work study?
Um, President Weaver, I would just like to say again, a, a really heartfelt thank you to Dr. Bailey and her team and the efforts, not just on the recovery services, but all the great work that they're doing um, in support of our students. It's, it has been already acknowledged, uh, she came in at a, and did hit a really challenging time. But I just feel like the attitude, the philosophy um, is just very, very positive. And uh, I'm just really grateful to the work that her and her team are doing.
Yeah, and I think the number of meetings that are needing to happen in the next few months is um, could be overwhelming. Um, I appreciate that it's being managed as well as it is. Um, and I know that there's just a tremendous amount of hard work going on. So thank you very much for that. Um, okay, so I did mention that we had a board retreat. It was actually Monday and Tuesday of this week. So we spent a lot of time in this room. And by the way, when we say retreat in quotes, it's in this room, lunch comes in. It's not really like a spa type thing. Um, we did spend, I'm just going to kind of rattle through the agenda and then I will um, open it up to the board to talk about things that um, resonated with them. We spent an entire morning talking about recovery plans. We spent some time with um, Executive Director Engels, talking about the communications plan and the uh, new district website being developed literally any day now. Um, we talked about safety and security. We got an update on construction of Middle School Six, oh, not Middle School Six, Cougar Mountain Middle School and High School Four, which is still High School Four. We spent some time in executive session. We spent some time talking about what possible levy packages might look like and when they might happen. We uh, spent some time on our board self-assessment because once a year, the entire board takes the WASDA Board Self-Assessment and rates itself on how well we're doing um, on various items that come under the five board standards um, that WASDA uses. So we spent some time discussing that. Uh, we spent some time, uh, we spent quite a bit of time with um, Andrew McCormick, our executive directors of high schools, uh, talking about some high school regulations, talking about our progress um, against EL12 on homework and grading. Uh, I had an update on athletics, activities, clubs, and uh, what's the difference and how are they funded? Uh, we spent some time talking about the student representatives and how we might, representatives to the board, I should say, and how we might do that a bit differently in the future. Um, yeah, and we had another executive session because can't meet with the board without doing that. So quite a lot that went on. I thought we had some really deep um, and interesting discussions. I feel like I learned a lot. Um, and I will toss it out to the board. Anne?
I'll start with one. Um, I really appreciated the conversation we had and the work that's being done around the EL12 and the grading and the work that our staff is doing to align their scope and sequence or the, the work that they do um, within their cohorts of subject. And because that's really moving so that kids get a very similar experience, no matter which teacher you have, when you're taking the same course. And I know then it, it'll get extended to across our multiple high schools. So I thought that work sounded like really significant progress in this area that we've been talking about for a while and included all of the, the essential learnings that students were expected to learn, the grading, the homework, that whole relationship together and how um, subjects are, are making this much more common.
Anybody else? Sydney?
Yeah, I, I think it was a couple of days well spent for sure. I think though, one that maybe sticks out the most is going through the full recovery plan uh, level by level. So getting to understand that the approach is being taken at elementary and, and secondary, how that differs per level, how those are proceeding. And I think um, you know, it's, it's such critical work to make sure that we can assess and evaluate um, where each student is in their learning journey and create a plan forward for them. And so, uh, you know, it's just really thoughtful work already underway, already, you know, with early, early results or early validation. And so um, you know, we're not that far into the school year, but it's, it's good to know that. But it's, it's good to know that, that we have the plan forward in many ways, or at least how we'll get to the plan in a personalized way, depending on what level each of our students is at. So I thought that was a super informative conversation.
I was going to say, there's, there was just so much going on. And I would agree that just kind of getting an understanding of what the recovery for everyone looks like and how we're going to catch up. And so I did appreciate hearing about that and really appreciated the work on EL 12. And, you know, we changed that last year and just being able to see what the last school year, and being able to see just all the work that Teaching and Learning Services have done already, the work that our teachers have been doing for years, the professional development. That's all culminating. And you can start to see and hear about real substantial change around meeting the needs of students. I thought that was important. I was going to highlight the safety and security. Our person that gave public input isn't here anymore to hear. But, but we do have issues around security and having Director Montalvo come and talk to us about those, what options we have moving forward, and how he and his staff are covering and trying to do their best. So I think we can recognize that, like much of the nation, especially as we get further to COVID mandates being in place, there are impacts to our community from people choosing not to be vaccinated. And it's going to have an impact. And so we're already feeling that. And it was a perspective I hadn't thought of was people aren't, people who know that they will likely lose their job would be taking their vacation. And, and so then we weren't getting the services that we needed. So, yeah, I thought that was enlightening. And I look forward to the work of Director Montalvo in improving security and safety in our schools.
Thank you. Harlan, did you have anything you wanted to add?
I talk a lot, so I'll be quiet.
Hey, you're allowed to talk.
President Weaver, if I could, just first of all, a huge thanks to my team for coming in and being prepared and always willing to, to take the questions and provide and have dialogue with the school board. I did want to note on the EL 12 work, I got to give a shout out to Executive Director Andrea McCormick. And Jason Morris are kind of leading that effort in collaboration with our Teaching and Learning Services Department. So it's a, it's a really nice example of a collaborative effort amongst the team. And I really do appreciate the efforts that they put forward and how quickly they've responded to the board's actions from last year.
And I certainly appreciate all the staff who took time to meet with the board during those two days. And of course, the superintendent, who took two days out of his incredibly busy life. I do want to add, for those of you who aren't familiar with a board retreat, it's like an eight-hour work-study session. The board does not take any action at a retreat. We discuss matters in depth that are of interest to the board. And we do discuss matters that are going to influence future agendas. So we actually have several topics that we discussed at the retreat that will be showing up in either work-study sessions or agenda items in future board meetings. So this is really just an opportunity for the board and the administration to do some deep dives around a lot of different subjects. And somehow, I thought that this board retreat was unusually, what's the word I want? No, pardon?
I think we anticipated it was going to be a nearly light, and then it wasn't.
Oh, well, that's true. No, I was going to say, we've productive, yes, thank you. That is the word I was looking for. We've moved away a little from, you know, administrators come and giving PowerPoints to the board and more into getting some general information and then letting the board just help you with questions, which is probably sort of terrifying for the administration, but it's really what the board wants. So we appreciate your letting us do that. And we got a lot of really good information. So it was awesome. Okay, report out on the board town hall. So the board held a town hall meeting on September 30th at the Isaguá High School Performing Arts Center. I put this on the agenda really because I wanted to give the board the opportunity to talk about what worked well, what didn't work well, do we want to do it again? Do we want to do it the same? Do we want to do it differently? I will start by saying, I liked the format for the most part. I was disappointed that there weren't more people in the room. On the other hand, maybe that was a good sign. Always a good sign when you don't have 200 people in the room. The only thing that I thought, not so much didn't go well, but I think we didn't communicate it well enough to the people in the room, was we let everybody pepper us with questions or topics for questions. Harlan amazingly quickly put those into sort of subcategories and let the room rank them. And I thought that worked great. But then, as we went through them, if no one asked a specific question on the item, we skipped the item. And I think, I think there was confusion in the audience. I understand that our thinking was, we don't want to put words in the public's mouths. We don't want to answer a question that maybe wasn't the question they wanted to ask. But I don't think they realized that if nobody asked a question, we just weren't going to discuss the topic at all. So I think that's something that we could probably do better on our part. Otherwise, I thought it went well. I would certainly be willing to do it again. I, I certainly prefer interacting with people in the room. I kind of wonder if we should figure out a way to interact with people who aren't in the room, but I'm not sure. And I'll open it up to you all. Anyone?
I'm first tonight. So I thought it went really well. I was, I thought it was an energizing experience. It was like 20 people, I think was my count of people who came and took time out of their day to come into the room and participate in that experience live. I think that the facilitation was great. I think Harlan did a very nice job with that. I, I actually feel pretty strongly about having someone voice their question. A great example is one of the questions we did get, it just, you know, it was eliminating the SAT. I had no idea what someone was concerned about with that until they put voice to the actual question. And so, because that could go many, many different ways than what one I still hadn't considered. So I think, I think that's a part of it, right? People often will say it's unsatisfying to come in and give their comment and not hear anything. So I think it's a wonderful opportunity to actually be presented with, let's sit down and we're all happy to talk. But then there's a responsibility there, too, which is, well, what's the, you know, what's the thing? What's, what's the question? So I think with those who were willing to voice, voice their question, we had a rich conversation. And hopefully, the next time we do it, people are like, oh, I have to, I have to have a question, you know? Or maybe one person had six of those, and so they didn't want to hog the mic, I'm not sure. But I thought it was, I thought it was great. I think 20 people in the room was a good, a good mix and a good mix of, of concern.
Yeah, and I should clarify, I didn't mean to imply that Harlan didn't do a good job, because I thought she did. I just think, I think we weren't clear to the public that if there wasn't a question, we weren't going to address the item at all. That was my own concern. Anybody else, Marnie?
I would say it's that question of whether or not you should let the people on the Zoom participate in the question asking. And that, I still think, there was something about if you were in the room and it felt more like a conversation, that I don't think I would want with somebody who was away. Now, one of the nice things is it was 20 people in a sizable room that can typically sit, what, 300, 400 people?
600.
So there was plenty of room to be social distancing. And so, so maybe being able to communicate that out the next time we do these. I would certainly say, I think, doing these in the feeder patterns would make it more accessible to families. Because, you know, coming down from sub manager, coming all the way up from Renton and trying to come to a meeting in Isaguá, I think is challenging. So I would, I would love to do more. And then I thought, I was pleasantly surprised that the questions we got were more policy, because we were trying to convey, you know, don't ask us about things that you really need to just talk to your teacher or, or administrator about. But really, we were there to discuss high-level policy, philosophy, those type of things. And that's, for the most part, what we got. So I really appreciated that. And we didn't get any email responses back, so I don't know how the community felt. I'd wonder if it would be nice to have some type of sign-in so that we could do some type of survey out back to them to say, did this go, you know, what was, what was their experience? So we're reporting our, our experience. It was great. I don't know if they felt the same way.
Harlan?
So I think that having the opportunity was really important. You know, I was really pushing for this. And I am grateful that our superintendent was there and Stephen, for all the work that he did to have us pull that off, especially with some glitches that we had. So I think that, I agree with Sydney. Like, hearing people say it in their voice is really important. And I actually was less bothered by there'd be some topics that people ranked highly of concern, but then, but didn't have a specific question. I guess I would go back to, like, I think we hear a lot about that, that is, and then that's how we kind of, at least in my mind, separate. So what are things that people are really passionate about, but not willing to say something or really passionate? And then, but yeah, yeah, actually, I want to follow it up with a question. And so I think that those elevated as things of concern, like some of them was like COVID-19 mitigation concerns. So I think people just in general are concerned about that, but they didn't have particular question. And I would speak, I would say that's likely because their questions have been answered by all the good work the district has been doing and put on the website. So I guess I didn't see that, like, most of the ones that were ranked highly of concern, but not questions asked, were really like COVID-related, in my mind. So I, I thought that was helpful. I would love to see us, based on looking at the distribution on where people came from, I would love to see us do one this fall, as quickly as possible, actually in the Liberty Feeder pattern. And then sometime later, in the Skyline One. But when we look at where people came from, it was lots of Isaguá, some Skyline, and very little Liberty.
You know, I just, as Harlan was talking, I was thinking, the part I maybe loved the most was hearing what was going well. So I, I thought that there was an amazing amount of feedback and sharing of, of all of the things and that people thought were going really well since the start of school. That is not normally what we, what we get to hear. And so I thought that was, that was great and, and a really refreshing opportunity. And then with that, I also thought it was a great opportunity to be able to talk to people after. So people who had the interest to stay and wait and have a one-on-one, two-on-one sort of conversation, I thought was also a great, a great opportunity. I think there's, you know, just a humanizing on both sides that happens with, with, with those kind of opportunities.
Well, I'll just share, I wasn't able to attend, because we ended up having to pick a date that I was already committed to something else. But I did watch the live, or the YouTube video of it. And I thought, you guys did a great job. And I thought it was, it really was a good opportunity to hear from the community and have you all be able to engage with them. I thought it worked really well. So from just watching it later, good job, guys.
And I will add a big thank you to Stephen. We did have some technical glitches. They were not remotely his fault. People had randomly unplugged things that nobody knew would be unplugged. It was just, but he managed to give us a stopgap so that we made it happen. And we are very grateful for that. I know it was stressful. And I know we did this, like, sort of quickly. I would love to schedule another one. And if we think South End is the place to do it, then let's do it in the South End. I assume Liberty has a big, a similar big performing arts center that we could use. I would say to people, now, I know that some of the reason people don't show up is childcare dinner and very kinds of things that they just can't leave the house. But to the extent that people don't show up because of COVID concerns, I would just echo what one of you said, that it was a huge venue. You could have your own row, you could have your own section. I mean, it was, I don't think there were COVID concerns. And of course, everyone was masked. So we can do a doodle or we can try to schedule something, I don't know.
And calendaring, I think we should try and schedule.
Okay, let's talk about it in calendaring. That sounds good. Superintendent, did you want to add anything? Which, I will add, I tried very hard to not defer to the superintendent to answer questions. I realize he knows all the answers, but it was really more about engaging with the board. So unless there were things that were really operational that we honestly just didn't know, I tried to pull things out of your hands rather than put them in. So I hope you were not offended by that.
Not at all, not at all. Appreciated the opportunity to be there, to hear from the community along with my five bosses. And I think it was Director Meraldo who said that it felt really good that this did stay at a very high kind of policy vision kind of level. And we, as you know, we can get down and get mired in the details, because there's 10 million of them happening at any given time to make this amazing school system function. And so, no, I just appreciated the effort on the part of the board and was happy to be there to assist in any way I could.
Okay, so we will, oh, oh, yes, I'm sorry. We do have somebody who wanted to give public input. And since, yeah, this is something we want public input on it, we'll take it. So Tony Hunter, did you want to give input on the town hall?
Hi, I'm sorry, I actually have two bits of input. One, I've been waiting to give input on the Recovery Services Work Study. So I found that incredibly informative, but I did want to give a few thoughts that I had while I was listening. The first is that I found my son's Recovery Services meeting to be a really nice opportunity to meet in and check in with the team earlier in the year than I normally get to outside of an IEP meeting. But I was, with all due respect, I was really surprised to hear that the district is surprised that Recovery Services are being turned down. While Recovery Services are very helpful and seen as a positive from an educator standpoint, there's a lot of drawbacks from a student standpoint who's already struggling in school, who might already have a greater dislike of school than a neurotypical student. The idea of asking these kids to come in and do more work outside of school hours, over breaks, miss out on that brain break and family and friend time that their peers get, can be really difficult for those students from a mental health perspective. Also additionally, at least for me, it was made very clear that those services were not even likely to be provided by a sped teacher, which is a big turnoff to myself and others that I know in the community. So just something to be aware of as you continue to have those, those meetings. My other thought on the Recovery Services or that, that work study was just echoing Dr. Bailey's wishes to have more inclusion classes. I feel really strongly that inclusion classes should be the standard. And I really want to encourage the district to look at this as the standard wherever possible, especially once you get to middle school and high school. Students are missing out on chosen electives to receive those services, which then makes them feel even more differentiated from their peers during a time that peer similarity is so much more important to them. Or if they're not missing out on those electives, then it might be because they're being put into a slower track. And that has a lasting input, impact on their education. It makes it harder for them to exit the IEP if they're not accessing at the same level as their students. For example, maybe they only make it through seventh grade math instead of eighth grade, because it's going at that slower pace, but now they might not be college-ready, in the same with their peers would. And that has a huge impact on the student, but also their self-esteem and their mental health. And if I may, I'm so sorry, but I know I'm over time, but just on the town hall piece, I think that you had mentioned that attending in person isn't always feasible. Some, I think there was one curriculum night that it overlapped with. But one takeaway that I had while I watched from home, I wasn't able to attend, was there was somebody who actually wanted to speak on two different topics, but they were told to, that they had already spoken on one topic, and then they weren't allowed to speak on another one. So even for an audience member, for me, I was a little taken aback from that. So just some feedback as you go to do that in the future.
Okay, thank you very much. I think we did ultimately circle back to that person. So, yeah, we, what we were trying to do was make sure others had the opportunity to speak first. But I take your point, we did circle back. Okay, so. So, uh, all right. So we're, we're good with the board town hall? Okay. Um, and then the last thing we did is that Director Moore, Director Gallinger and I, and the superintendent, attended the WASDA regional meeting in Renton. And this is the first time in a long time that these meetings have been in person. This one was actually hybrid. So we had as in so many things, we had roomies and zoomies. Director Mullings and Director Maraldo were unavoidably detained by a candidate forum, so they were unable to attend. So I throw it out to those of you who were there, if you have any comments.
Well, I'll make comments first because Dr. Gallinger was, uh, running the meeting.
Fair enough. And a fine job he did.
And that's what I was going to say. They did a fine job. Of course, the first half of our meeting was about electing positions, uh, for our region in WASDA. So we'll set that part aside. And then we had conversations, um, well, what I enjoy doing was having the conversations with other directors from, uh, neighboring school districts. And the commonality of the challenge by and large with the lack of the ESER funds, um, in support of our district and other districts, um, around us. And so we were able to share the struggles that we're having in trying to provide all these recovery services and all the mitigations for COVID, but yet received, um, so much less in per student funding compared to other districts, but yet have all or most of the same challenges that they had. So it was a good opportunity to have those conversations.
Yeah, it was interesting because, um, we had Issaquah represented, we had North Shore, we had Mercer Island, all of whom were on the very low end of the ESER stick in terms of dollars per students that they received. But then we went into a breakout group and I was with Tuck Willa, who was just, yeah, we want to hire all these people. We're having trouble finding them. And I mean, what a great problem to have. I felt like saying, although I don't really want to be Tuck Willa because they do have a lot of difficult issues that they deal with in their district. But, um, yeah, it was very interesting to see the balance back and forth. Because different, different districts right now are having very different experiences.
There were winners and losers.
There really were.
I just wanted to broadcast, uh, one of the answers to the question. So, and this ended up being sort of districts apparently had to choose one of these items of what was the most impacted way that your district needed additional supports. And it was basic education funding, special education funding, transportation funding, sub funding, social emotional funding, COVID-19 recovery funding or other. And to really see where special education really continues to stand out for districts apart from COVID-19 recovery or in addition to. So, uh, we did takeaways from the meeting. It was that our plan is to form a work group from DA two in order to leverage, how can we speak with a single voice for King County, which we represent 25% of the students in the state of Washington over an issue that we can all get behind. And I think special education is going to be that single issue. Uh, and speak with the left, the next biennium on, hey, since there's another almost billion dollars coming into the state budget and we know what the constitutional mandate is for serving students, why can't we serve and fill this gap of special education that hits every district in the state, including King County? But I think the message for legislators is because they like to try and play nice across the state is that no solution you do will actually be a solution if King County problems aren't solved as well. And I think they sometimes forget that.
Yeah, it's amazing, um, how many students are represented by our little district area too. I mean, it's not that many districts, but it's definitely a lot of students because and Seattle wasn't even there, right? But we have some of the, uh, some of the biggest districts in the state. So um, I don't know. Did you have anything you wanted to add?
Um, the first part of the meeting while the voting was happening, um, I could have, uh, probably sat out in my truck and missed that, but, uh, I did really, uh, like Director Moore mentioned, I, I always enjoy getting to hear from our surrounding districts and neighboring districts. And it was an opportunity for some of them to learn for the very first time about the dramatic differences in ESER funding from district to district, districts that literally share borders like we do with some that were, are getting five and 10 times the amount, um, of support that we were able, that we're able to get. And I want to be clear, we're not asking for any of their money. Uh, we believe that there is money, um, at OSPI and down in Olympia to support districts like Issaquah and Lake Washington and Bellevue and Riverview and Mercer Island. And, and a few other districts around the state too, that the federal formula kind of left out. So I really did appreciate that. And I did get to have a conversation with some board members from neighboring districts as well about something that, that I hope the legislators, uh, will give strong consideration to like they did in this last session, which is a hold harmless on enrollment. Because across the state of Washington, the average decline in enrollment is around four to five percent. I believe we're down about 50,000 students statewide that are attending our public schools. And that has a multiplier negative effect on us. It, it sends more, less revenue into our system and it allows us to collect less revenue through our levies and the like too. So, um, this is clearly a result of the COVID-19 pandemic. I don't believe this is permanent loss of enrollment. I think that for various reasons, families have made other choices. But I think that as we gradually return to our new normal, we will see these families return, but as they come back in, there'll be a lag in how the funding comes. So it would be my hope that the legislatures, uh, legislature would take up, uh, the idea of a hold harmless on enrollment back to the 2019 count. Because those kids are out there and they're going to come back. And I think they're going to start coming back even more after there's an 11 to five-year-old vaccine available as well. So that was a, a good conversation that I was able to have as part of my little breakout group too.
Yeah. And I want to be really clear. I know the board knows this, but just for the people who may be watching, but, um, this is not a problem unique to Issaquah. One of my breakout people was from Renton. They've had a big decline in enrollment. I know Bellevue, um, I'm not sure about North Shore, but I would guess, um, you probably know more about the individual districts than I do, but I know that quite a number of districts have, um, experienced some significant enrollment challenges.
Yeah, it's true.
Okay. Anything else on WASDA? Ooh, we can actually get to the meeting now. So that's, that's what happened in the last three weeks. Your board has been busy. And, um, now I will turn it over to Superintendent Bailey to discuss, um, school operations and COVID mitigation updates.
Thank you, President Weaver. Um, I, I would just like to note that, uh, we have now been in school over six weeks, um, in person, full-time, five days a week, just as, uh, the board resolution from last spring, uh, directed us and, uh, later, of course, the, uh, the governor and, uh, OSPI and we believe strongly in this. And as I shared, um, with one of our, um, wonderful partners in our community, the Influence the Choice organization, and I know we heard a little bit of this from our student reps tonight, the best thing that I believe we have done for the emotional wellbeing and mental health of our students, and frankly, for our overall community is have in-person schooling. So I'm just really proud of the staff and the families and the students who have all pulled together to do this in a way where you can clearly see from, and I know Dr. Allmeier will talk a little bit about our COVID dashboard, but you can see that we have not led to community spread. And in fact, during the time that school has been open to in-person learning since August 31st, we've actually seen a decline in COVID cases. And I know it's not a result of us having school. That's not a causal thing, but the, the fear of the, the mass outbreaks, and I knock wood, of course, whenever I say these things, um, didn't happen. And when I visit the schools and then visit the classrooms, um, I see, I continue to see a real sense of joy on the part of many, many students that we are back in person. And I hear that from staff as well. Now, I will tell you, it is hard and I hear that from the staff as well. And I am so appreciative of the, the extra work they're doing to one, attend to the, the wellbeing, the emotional wellbeing of their students, while also transitioning students back into the, the rigorous academic programs that we've come to know and expect here in the Issaquah School District. So I, I truly appreciate the efforts that everybody is making to keep our schools open. And, uh, we've got some things that we'll be reporting out tonight to help keep that and continue with that and keep kids in school because we, we believe so strongly in that. So I do have a few cabinet members ready to talk about several items tonight, including our COVID testing programs out in all of our schools and our COVID dashboard and FAQs, um, an update on our employee vaccination mandates and an update on vaccine clinic planning, as well as an update on some of our unique sixth grade and middle school mitigation strategies that are under review and even some, uh, middle level support, um, questions we might receive as well. So I thought I first asked Dr., uh, Josh Allmeier, our deputy superintendent to come up, and I know Josh is prepared. Josh, um, is our district COVID supervisor. So I've got to give him, um, a, a big shout out for that. It's, it's a huge job that didn't exist in public education until this pandemic came. And, um, I, I'm sure Dr. Allmeier never dreamed that he would spend as much time communicating with public health and, uh, with, uh, uh, officials like that and planning and strategizing. I know that there's a doctor in front of his name, but it's, he's not that kind of a doctor, but I'm sure on some days it kind of feels like it, given, uh, when you're talking about medical tests and things like that. But so, um, Dr. Allmeier, if you could kind of just give us an update on what you've been up to a little bit.
Thank you, Superintendent Bailey. Josh Allmeier, Deputy Superintendent. And you are correct, uh, in the Leadership for Learning doctoral program at the University of Washington, they never covered epidemiology. So, uh, just as a heads up on that, we did a lot of, a lot of policy work, but nothing, uh, on that front. I am very excited to talk about, uh, a few things that have transpired, uh, with numbers that we have, even since, uh, reported out some numbers to the board on Monday, uh, Monday morning. First and foremost, uh, one of the things that we had talked about at the board retreat was that we had put in another test order and were awaiting tests and had heard in a lot of the Zooms that we were on is that there was going to be, they thought the possibility of a shortage. Uh, however, our test came in yesterday. So our order came in, uh, we are, I believe, uh, 1,500 tests more. And, uh, uh, we will continue to put those orders in on a routine basis because we're using those tests out in buildings. Nextly, uh, uh, if you read the E-News on, uh, Tuesday afternoon, uh, you, uh, community knows that we have implemented the test to stay program, which I'll talk about in just a second. We've also, uh, just updated our FAQs, lots more information on the FAQs on test to stay. If anyone is interested, including a link to the DOH page, um, page 14, that's a big document, but if you go down to page 14, you'll see even more details on the test to stay program. Uh, and we have implemented that, uh, in all of our buildings. And I wanted to go over some data just of the first six weeks, specific to the amount of close contacts for students and the amount, uh, of those students who quarantined by week. And I think that there's a really interesting piece, uh, of data there that I'll end with on our week seven, which is the week that we're in right now. The first week of school, this is back the one that started in August 31st, 14 total, uh, close contacts, 11 needed to quarantine. Uh, on the second week of school, 56 close contacts, 29 had to quarantine. On the third week, 107 close contacts, 71 had to quarantine. On the fifth week, 55, on the fourth week rather, 177 close contacts, 64 had to quarantine. Week number five, 55 close contacts, 30 had to quarantine. Last week, which was week six, 54 close contacts, 19 needed to quarantine. I do want to say that if you look at our COVID dashboard, what you will see is that the overwhelming vast majority of folks who are having to quarantine are in elementary school or sixth grade. This week, with the test to stay program, first full week of tests to say, 12 close contacts, one is in court, decided to quarantine. Everybody else was either vaccinated or is in the test to stay protocol right now. So the test to stay protocol, uh, which we actually started last Thursday, uh, but this is the first full week. Uh, there is a good possibility, even with the possibility of cases that could come in tomorrow or over the weekend, that with all of the students that were quarantining in weeks one through six, that we will have one who is choosing to not do the, the test to stay program and all of the other students are in school. So, um, it was a large lift to not only get our rapid antigen testing on sites, uh, and folks trained and get those going, but then to pivot quickly into the test to stays, uh, uh, program. Um, I believe that in King County, we were amongst the first to do that. There's a few right where we are. There's that, there's a whole slew of districts right behind us. I think that within the next week or two, they will be implementing. But just based on that data, what is my takeaway is that with this program, we are able to give kids an option who are not vaccinated and asymptomatic to stay in school and to not have to quarantine. So, um, some, uh, exciting data there. 12 positive cases this week with a day and a weekend to go. And I, the, the one other thing that I would say is just a debt of gratitude and a huge thank you because I know that there's a lot of folks out there on the Zoom right now, principals, assistant principals, COVID supervisors, nurses, health room specialists, folks in buildings who are working so hard. Um, they work hard every single day. They work very long hours to make these programs work and to implement these programs and to keep kids in school and to keep our kids safe and to keep our staff safe. So I just want to say thank you to those folks, whether you're listening or not, whether you're watching on our YouTube channel. Uh, your work does not go unnoticed. Um, and, uh, thank you very much. We're headed in a good direction as far as mitigating the virus and keeping kids in school. It will still take a lot of work and effort from everyone to keep up this momentum, but we're up for the task.
Thank you, Dr. Allmeier. And I will second all of that gratitude towards those individuals out there in the buildings, doing this work and manning those isolation rooms. And again, I want to thank the families as well for helping us keep a safe environment at school, encouraging our students to wear their mask and wash their hands and, uh, also to practice COVID mitigation outside of school too, because the virus doesn't just live in schools, it lives in society. So, I really am grateful to the community and the staff and everybody for all their efforts.
And one more thank you. Uh, and you see here on the Zoom there, Alicia Engels, our executive director of communications, her and her team who have been a huge partner in this, uh, in building our new data dashboard, which we've gotten a lot of positive feedback on. Uh, and, and Robert Miller, uh, who is our district webmaster who built that piece along with all of our COVID coordinators here. Uh, we meet, uh, on a regular basis every single week. Uh, we have Zoom meetings every Friday with all of our COVID supervisors and nurses and HRs who are out in buildings to answer questions. So it's definitely been a team effort. Um, and we'll, we'll just keep learning the best that we can and, and, and continuing the work that we're doing.
Great. Thank you, Josh. Appreciate it.
I just want to also say thank you. This test to stay program, I think is going to be game changing for us because you guys have both have been a very strong proponent of in-person learning and that that's the best modality for our students for recovery. And this allows you to continue to leverage that modality. So, and I know that was a big lift. Also want to give a shout out to, uh, Donna Hood for applying for the Health Commons grant, which will help stipend the COVID-19 testing work because it is not in anyone's normal job description. And it is above and beyond what they're already doing to educate our students. So you know, you're doing everything you can. And I think this is the power of vaccination in our community because I work and care for many students and families in Pierce and Thurston County and seeing and hearing from parents about how whole classrooms and whole elementary schools are closed
Yes.
because of COVID. So it really is, uh, a testament to community doing their part, family doing their part, and then the layers of mitigation that you are implementing with fidelity. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Gallinger. One last thank you. I, I cannot leave the, the dais here without doing one last thank you. My administrative assistant, Nancy Francis is right over here. She's my partner in crime and doing all of this work when this was put on my plate back in March of last year. Uh, we both jumped into this, uh, feet first and it's been a learning experience and we're continuing to learn, but, uh, she's been a big part of, uh, making this work as well.
Absolutely. Thank you for that acknowledgement, Josh. Dr. Gallinger, you mentioned Assistant Superintendent for Human Resources, Ms. Hood, and she and her department have also been the individuals who, um, had a massive task heaped upon them, uh, at the start of the school year when the state mandated vaccinations for all, um, K-12 employees effective on the 18th or the 19th of October. And I know, um, previously Assistant Superintendent Hood has given some updates and that date is, is creeping ever closer. And so I thought it would be a good time. And so I thought it would be a good time to kind of share our most recent numbers, if you will, related to how prepared we will be come October nineteenth.
Yes, I am happy to do that. So Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources, Donna Hood. Yes, probably the most exciting news, we all kind of did a little cheer in HR. We believe our bus routes will be absolutely unaffected. We have gotten every single driver to engage in, in one of the various options through the governor's mandate, whether it was verifying vaccine or religious or medical exemption, very, very happy about that. We have ten additional drivers in class learning right now. And we are of course, working with them on verification. So as soon as they are done with training, we can deploy them to be out there driving. There are, there's one or two remaining people who are just either finding their card, remembering to bring it to work, to the office, but very, very small numbers overall, single digits in all labor groups for anybody that is not totally and completely done. Down to just one cert, our pair pros are done, our office pros are done. And just a couple of people that were halfway through a vaccination process. And so we will work with them to make sure we, we get to that full vaccination status and get to keep them on as employees. So we are extremely grateful for all the staff working with us to get this record keeping handled. It was a large task and my, my team did a tremendous job.
Assistant Superintendent, Assistant Superintendent Hood doesn't even know this, but I was in a conversation earlier today with an official from a, a district in our region, in a neighboring county that is one-fifth the size of our district that still has many dozens of employees that have not been able to verify. And that's becoming a real stressor point for some of them. My hope for them is that, you know, they'll get a flood right in the eleventh hour. But if you only have five hundred employees and fifty of them haven't verified and you're days away, that's a pretty scary place to be. And I think we're not in that place in one part, because our employees are awesome by and large and doing what they know will help keep them and our students and community safe. And the work of you and your, your support staff has just been remarkable. I, I, I just see the activity over there in your office every day. And it's, it's been, and as I said, that was on no one's work plan at the start of, you know, back this summer. So.
Lots of hustle and bustle. Our goal was to keep everybody employed, to get this outreach done. And we're, we're really, really pleased with where we are right now, very pleased. I think we're all going to sleep a little better this weekend, which is delightful. I also wanted to share a brief update on volunteers. We have approved three hundred and ninety-three volunteers to be out in the schools. And I thought that might be of interest. We did have sort of a shift in priorities, knowing that we had a little bit more lunchroom supervision need than we anticipated. So we have lots of folks out there. We kind of broke these into type of volunteer. We have about a hundred and thirty-three PTSA volunteers approved, and many of them are helping in lunchrooms and also with things like textbooks, right? Mission critical items that we identified with IEA in that first joint communication. So really need to get textbooks in kids' cans to get the lessons done, obviously. So we deployed them for that. We have about ninety-seven voice mentors out in buildings, working with students. About forty-four coaching staff that are volunteer coaches, mostly at the high schools, couple middle. We have approximately a hundred and two different volunteers helping out in libraries, not all on the same day. They are broken down day by day. And about nine folks helping out with particular high school clubs. There are some that really need industry experienced people for particular things like robotics. So we allowed staff to identify those mission critical people again. And we, we have about nine of them. Gibson Eck has about five advisors from the community that are approved and our community truancy boards about three. So really pleased too, with the number of volunteers we've been able to get through and get out into buildings and, and working.
Great.
And all the, all the volunteers are fully vaccinated.
Well, keep in mind, we, we have to work through exemption meetings with our own staff first. And so we were able to deploy most quickly those volunteers whose vaccines are verified. But we, we cannot just say no, we have to then sort of prioritize which meetings can we afford to hold next. We do have about eighty-two exempted employees, mixture of medical and religious. And of course, each of those is an individual assessment of that person's need or request before we can accommodate. So it's, it's very time intensive and it is one-on-one kinds of work. And that is why we have not plowed through exemption meetings for all volunteers yet.
I think it is reassuring to our public and our students that they are in a highly, highly vaccinated environment when they come into our schools.
Yes, highly vaccinated.
And, and after the, when we're back to in session on the nineteenth, completely vaccinated unless there's exemptions and then there's other measures of mitigation that are in place there.
There are indeed. And in fact, we got trained by Atlas Labs today, my team and I. So we are prepared and ready to start our exempted employee testing on the twenty-first. And we will have tests in our hands tomorrow. A couple of my team are going to go visit one of the rent and drive-through sites to just kind of eyeball it for our logistical planning. And we're super confident the training was, was very straightforward. They're so well organized and planned and thought out that we feel very good about how we can do it.
And so to be clear, any employee that got an exemption will be tested weekly and that's a requirement.
Well, we were not allowed to create one list of requirements that we would just give to all people. It was, it was expected under the law, under the mandate to be an individualized assessment. So we really carefully looked at the amount of contact the person has with students or staff and then determined which safety requirements to put in place. Many of our exempted employees will be going through testing. But for example, we have some staff who worked outside ninety percent of their day and interact with five people. There are ways to accommodate different roles. And so we were asked and advised and required to really look at each person's job and from there build the enhanced safety requirements out that would make sense for the role. So the more contact you have with students and staff, the more requirements you'll likely see.
I would note too, it's just over thirty-two hundred employees, I believe.
Thirty-two forty-one. And eighty-two total, eighty, it might be at eighty-seven today, pardon me, that, that number changed today. Eighty-seven accommodated exempted employees.
And those are all various. I mean, I, I know when people think about school employees, they, they kind of automatically go to a teacher. But that, that represents about fourteen hundred of our employees, but we have a lot of, and that, we have substitutes and stuff as well, but paraprofessionals, office pros, food service workers, bus drivers, custodial maintenance, HVAC specialists, all kinds of folks out there doing all kinds of work and doing a great job, I might add, for the ISD.
Indeed. It is just mind boggling to me, the amount of COVID work that is being done out there by you guys, by the people who work for you, by the admin in the buildings, by the teachers. And it's not like anybody's other job requirements went away. So this is all just being layered on top of what everyone normally does. And I can't thank you all enough.
Well, thank you. We appreciate that very much. For my part, at least, I don't know a whole lot better, which is good, right? That's the, the benefit of being the new guys, just like feels normal. So it's good.
Great.
That's right.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna, for that. I, I did want to also invite our executive director of middle schools up, Jason Morris. And I know he's going to talk a little bit about some of, as I mentioned earlier, the unique sixth grade, middle school mitigation strategies that we had put in place. Because as you'll recall, middle school is an interesting place where you have three grade levels, two of which are vaccine eligible. And we know from our internal data that we are highly vaccinated amongst our seventh and eighth grade population. But our sixth graders by and large are not of age yet. So I think only about ten percent of our sixth grade population is, is fully vaccinated. And so we had put in some additional mitigation. But you know, as you heard Dr. Allmay earlier, we have, we've now collected nearly seven weeks of our own internal data. So it's appropriate that we would be reviewing some of these things and seeing if it's appropriate to modify them or, or not. But before Executive Director Morris talks about that, this is not just a COVID update. This is school operations in COVID. And I did want to touch on something that I know Jason has been a fierce advocate as a former middle school principal. We, we both are actually for that level in our system. Because as you know, we opened our sixth middle school this year. So while we had the effect of reducing the population in our middle schools, some quite significantly by over three hundred students. And then we moved staff around to populate those buildings. Under a normal circumstance, you know, if you take three hundred and so kids out of a building, you would take some staff out with that. You might take a counselor out of the building or something like that, which again, would be normal because your counseling ratios don't change all that much. However, coming out of the pandemic, we have seen, you know, some challenging behaviors. And, you know, those of us who work in public education know that if you're going to have challenging behaviors, it's more common that they are at the middle level. It's a, it's a time of adolescence in life. And, and so, you know, this board has looked at discipline reports over the years. And you might note that there's quite a bit that usually lives in that middle level world. You don't see nearly as much of it in the elementary grades. And, and then kids kind of mature and you don't see as much of it at the high school level. And so one of the things what we've been experiencing as we came back and we did do a, a kind of a reshuffling of the staff as we opened Cougar Mountain Middle School, is we are experiencing, we heard some of it in public input tonight at some of our campuses, some more extreme behaviors, if you will. And so I know Jason, as I say, has been a fierce advocate for his, his folks. But we have to look at everything in the lens of the entire district, especially when resources are tight and they always are. But I do want this board to know, because I know there's been some questions and concerns that we are looking at some ways to increase some supports for our middle schools. And we actually have some things in the pipeline right now that should be providing some of those supports in the next days and weeks to come. Some, some of it has a bit of a delay because we actually have to hire staff and get them on board and get them trained and so forth. But I don't want the public or the board to think, and I certainly don't want my middle school educators or, or Jason to think that we're ignoring their concerns. I do hear and I appreciate kind of the creative thinking that's coming around with my cabinet and the team to find ways to support those middle school folks. My heart goes out to them. Again, I spent many, many years of my career, especially in the early phases of my career as a middle school assistant principal and principal. So I know it can be a challenging job and it's got some real challenges right now too. So, but I also know, Jason, that you were here to talk and you've been having conversations with your principals about some of the COVID mitigation. So feel free to speak to any of what I just kind of laid the table for there, Jason.
Thank you, Superintendent Thily. Lot of information there, kind of stole my intro as well. I may just, I might go sit down now. I will gladly accept on behalf of all of my principals and middle school staff, any additional supports that we can have and that I thank you for that. I've kind of spoken to a few of my principals about maybe some possibilities and you can feel a sense of relief. I speak with my principals on the daily about creative solutions. And I want to give a shout out to all middle school staff, people working, I mean, the whole district really, but middle school is kind of where I tend to speak for. They're working hard and I want to acknowledge the district office staff and staff from other locales that have been helping us out a bit here and there as well. Officer Montalvo in the safety security, we've had some school security officers from our high schools really step up this year to come over to some of their neighboring schools and, and lend a hand. And that teamwork and collaboration has just been monumental for ourselves. And a lot of district office folks going out to help out in buildings. And that, that's not just middle school, that's across the board, because that's where the action's happening. I do want to speak Superintendent Thily and members of the board to our mitigation practices. I know at the start of the school year, Superintendent Thily articulated, you know, we were a little nervous. We have sixth graders in a secondary environment, many of whom are not of age to access a vaccine yet. So we wanted to be cautious and we added in some different layered mitigations, particularly specifically not having sixth grade students change in the PE locker room as a means to kind of keep kids spread out. Because quite frankly, we felt like we could administer COVID mitigation strategies well. But we wanted to see how well that responded with the virus and how well our mitigation strategies would work, especially with the Delta variant, which as we know is more contagious. Those mitigation strategies seem to be helping, seem to be working. Our rates, as Dr. Allmei indicated, of transmission have been relatively low. So based on feedback from the board, based on feedback from many of our teachers, based on feedback from our community, I, we are beginning work on opening up those opportunities for PE locker room changing and really trying to get our system back to kind of what we would say normal operations. It's going to take a couple of days, maybe a week or two, because we want to make sure kids have access to their PE uniforms. We want to make sure those sixth graders, for those who've had a sixth grader, they have not had a combination lock yet. And that can be a stressor. So we want to take some time to make sure they know how to right, left, right and open those locks. So that practice or that planning is in practice right now. You'll start seeing that in E-News, we're going to start making sure the community's aware. My principals are working with their PE staff to kind of get that going. I'm smiling under my mask because I feel like that's a step towards what I would consider normal. And I know sometimes those combo locks can be a, a challenge for our kids, but that's a learning experience and kind of a secondary rite of passage. So I'm happy that, that, that is kind of in the hopper, moving ahead. And I let my principals know that, you know, we're going to start looking at hallway locker usage as well. That one is going to be a little bigger piece because that would involve the entire school student body. But we're going to get the locker room thing going and then we'll start moving towards hallway lockers. One of the pieces I would be remiss not to add, in addition to the feeling that our mitigation strategies are working, is really the test to stay program. So if we do incur close contacts because of proximity, having students be able to participate in the test to stay program increases the likelihood that we would not be asking them to leave the educational setting. And I think that's a really big tipping point for me anyway, as far as feeling more comfortable to open those opportunities up. So then additionally, we'll be moving forward to our winter sports season. Well, speaking of testing, much like the high school, we'll be implementing testing for our athletic programs for students who may not be vaccinated, which will be, again, glad to be able to do that to keep the opportunities available for kids. So.
Great. Thank you, Jason. Anything else, Ron? There are questions from the board?
Do they have any questions? Arlen.
Sarah was just saving my questions for this, in the retreat. So I, I think I, I just have concerns about currently how we've just been hearing mainly from the middle levels about behavioral concerns or teachers not feeling like they have the supports they need to support our students coming back from many of whom, over half the building, hasn't been in school ever in our middle schools. So I guess I, I feel like sometimes in a system that is this large, we struggle to provide that just in time type intervention. And I am concerned about the lack of, my perceived lack of timeliness to address real issues that are happening, not just in one middle school. And all the issues that we're seeing are different in every one of our middle schools, which makes it probably more challenging.
I, I would agree, Dr. Gallager, there's not a one size fits all solution here for, for middle school support. Part of the challenge too, is goes back to some staffing issues and some challenges to actually hire the types of people we need. I can give you some examples of how we're putting some kind of creative thinking around this now, such as reallocating, you know, looking at our budget and seeing where there's underutilization of certain line items in the budget and redirecting that money towards creating those supports at the middle level. So we're in the process of doing that. Also, looking at ways to use agency staff. If we, if we simply cannot find anyone, we always prefer to go with our own people first and, and use our own hiring practices. But, you know, it, it is not completely uncom- But, you know, it, it is not completely uncommon for school systems to have to use agency staff. And so I, I believe we found, we're working on a solution right now for one particular sticky situation where we're going to be able to use agency staff. So yeah, the timeliness of it, I, I'm sure it, it, it doesn't seem fast enough, especially if you're in one of the schools that's struggling. And right now, it is support staff that I think are carrying a lot of that burden, in particularly our principals and assistant principals. Some of our counseling support staff and, and those as well. So I, you know, we're, we're going to move just as quickly as we can. We did anticipate some of this, but maybe not to the degree. And that, I guess, is an error on my part where, you know, just like I say, we, if, we knew coming into this school year. That we had students who hadn't been in school for a long time, they hadn't had the advantage of all of our, all, all of our teaching of not, you know. We don't just teach academic content, but we teach behavioral skills too, to, to all of our students. And I do think that there's been some improvement now that we're in the seventh week. We're, we're seeing a lot of the reteaching of expectations and, and all of that, that is, is starting to help. But there's still work to do out there and, you know, we're going to try to get that help is coming as quickly as we can. But it is a little challenging because you do have to look at each school and their situation uniquely and then determine, okay, what would be the best way? We could support this particular school and the issues they're having right now. So we're working on it, I guess, is what I would say. But I, I do understand the concern that's being raised and, and we're hearing it, it's not falling on deaf ears. Some of these problems are hard ones to solve.
Not at all to be critical of our principals. So I don't want to take it that way. What do you think the impact is of having, we have so many of our middle school principals who are really new to the job.
Well.
So it's really the question is like, so how are we supporting them in that role versus, we have a lot of longstanding elementary principals.
Yeah, I, I mean, I just want to say, and, and Jason works intimately with him every day. And he has a lot of experience in that role. And I, I feel very positive about our, our new higher administrators, really at all levels. Our assistants are at high school and middle school. And we've actually hired a number of elementary principals too, there's just a lot more of them. But at this point, seven weeks in, I, and, and some of them are new to the role of principal. But they're not new to the role of administrator or new to the role of administrator in the ISD as well. So that has not been a big, my biggest concern for our new administrators is how are they holding up? And you asked about how we're supporting them and Jason's a big part of that in our middle school office. And, you know, we're all here, me and everyone on my cabinet to support all of our buildings. And they also reach out to one another. I know there's a lot of camaraderie amongst that middle school group, there always has been. But that is not, I, I feel at least that what I've observed in the first seven weeks of the year, I've been very impressed. By particular, our newest, our new higher principals. We have a couple of them that are, this is their first principalship. And again, they're both have been long-term, longtime employees in the Issaquah School District and other positions, including assistant principals. But it's a tough time though, to come into this profession in this role. Just really any leadership role in public education right now, from superintendent, right down to anybody who has supervisory or responsibility. It is a tough time for them. And, you know, we talk almost every day, Jason and I, and, and I always ask the question, you know, how are folks holding up out there? And, you know, they're, they're, they're good people, they're, they're smart and they're strong, but it is challenging to them. I know, I don't know, Jason, but your thoughts are on that as well?
No, I appreciate the question, Director Gallager. So we have two brand new principals at the middle level this year, both of whom are very experienced from an assistant principal standpoint. And rich history of experience specifically at the middle level. Basically, most of their careers at the middle level. I would say no matter how experienced you are, your first principalship is a bit of a shock to the system, if you will. There's, there's just, there's, there's difference there. I remember being a first year principal and it was really hard. So there's no doubt in my mind that that adds a level of difficulty, simply because your first principalship. I think anyone who's been a principal would say, yeah, that was a really tough year. I would say we have very strong principals, our, our, my two brand new principals are doing very well. They both have mentor principals within the district that helps support them. We have a mentorship program, so they have a seasoned principal mentoring them. Our assistant principals are outstanding and that helps a lot as well. We have assistant principals with a few years of experience. So that, that's a, a big piece there. I, 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 I support my principals, I speak to them on the phone pretty much daily. Depending on what's happening in the building, for sure weekly. And then we meet as a cohort at least once a month, just principals and once a month, the entire team, in addition to other opportunities. So we try to continue to support each other. I think the mentorship with their colleagues is an important piece of work that we do. I would also articulate that I'm for sure not the only person who supports middle school principals. The entire cabinet is, has been incredibly supportive, whether we have a situation, maybe that focuses on counseling Pam Ryanair's department. If we have situations with equity, Director Sivadossen, we were partnering today, the last several days. To support our, our, our middle school principals. So it really is a team effort. It is hard in your first year, but I would say depending on what's happening in the school, it's, it's pretty tough on all of my teams right now. And, you know, I reflect on it constantly. There's a lot of trauma that has been caused by this pandemic and we're seeing that and we're uncovering it. And probably addressing it in some cases for the first time in eighteen months. And I think that's probably the hardest piece is we have students with varying abilities. And varying ways to cope. And it's a stressor. I know I have a sixth grader at home and she's tired, she's working hard. And I think that, that exhaustion for our students can sometimes manifest itself through behavior. It can sometimes manifest, manifest itself maybe from wanting to avoid school. I mean, there's all kinds of different things. So continuing with our counseling support for those students is important. We're in the process of administering the SDQ, Strength and Difficulties Questionnaire. And quite frankly, the building I spoke to this week has said they've seen kind of an uptick in some either internalizing or externalizing behaviors. I think that data is really going to help us support our kids. We're beginning now to administer the SBA. And I think that data is also going to help inform us from an academic standpoint. So we're going to have a lot of good data to work with, but it's going to be, I don't think it's going to be a quick fix overnight. It's going to be a while for us to really get in the groove.
Yeah, and, and I want to be very clear, I wasn't questioning the competency of any of our principals. It's really just as we're working on supporting our students, how are we supporting our, our newest administrators who are walking in to becoming a pandemic principal? But no one really thought they would do in their career. And I know in the past, like our district has had roving administrators to help support buildings and things like that. So I know you guys have been creative. So I just, I hope that we continue to support our middle schools. Because it certainly seems that there's a lot of challenges out there across the district.
Yeah, there's a lot of opportunities.
I do think getting, if, if we, we have to just continue to work on some of the staffing. Because often what happens in a school, if you're short, say, paraprofessionals. Really, there's nobody else to cover that but the building administrators. So if there's a lack of supervision, well, then you're spending more time in supervision. And of course, we know when you're out walking your halls, in your lunchrooms, doing your supervision, meeting with students. Your, your other work, your observations of teachers, you're answering your emails and your phone calls and questions from parents and staff. Kind of stacks up in your office. So I know they're spending lots of long hours. And I think one of the best things we can do for them is get, continue to work. And I know Donna and her team are, they're trying everything that they can come up with to get those positions filled. So that our principals can focus on their principal work and maybe not have to do so much of the other work. But, you know, kudos to them for stepping up to it. And, you know, one of the things that I'm trying to tell my, all of my staff is, we recognize how challenging it can be right now. And, you know, your priorities kind of have to shift in a post, you know, coming back from this, in, in. The post pandemic shutdown and the reopening as it is. And, and we told them from the get-go, the first thing is we need to be concentrating on the social, emotional wellbeing of the students. Give yourself a little permission to not hit the academics as hard. But one of the things that I've had a couple of principals now say to me is that, that was really appropriate in the beginning. But actually, one of the ways we're starting to see some calming, I guess, if you will. Is we're starting to get more into the meat of the academics and the classroom, you know. And it kind of was like a light bulb went off for me, of course, from my early days of teacher training. That's right. An active, engaged classroom is a classroom with less behavior problems. And so we're kind of moving out of the, everything's about COVID and that, and trying to get into a little bit more normal routine. And the academics is kind of starting. And at first I was a little nervous of that, thinking that, oh, these kids, they, that they just can't take one more thing. But in fact, I think maybe it's a, a nice distraction for a lot of them and it feels more normal. So I, I remain optimistic, but we've got good folks and, and you're completely right, Dr. Gallager, we got to support them and help them. You know, I'm so happy that they've chosen to be here and we want to keep them here and keep them healthy.
I have a, maybe a couple commentee question things. So one of the things that struck me, I guess, in listening to this last conversation was, one of the conversations we had a few, many times throughout COVID. Was around the support we needed to give students around, I guess, executive functioning. So when outside of the school, it was a new set of skills to advocate for themselves, to reach out to their teachers. And some of the, I think successes we had in that time in remote learning was in the programs put in place to identify. Those students who needed that additional support and those executive skills. It sounds to me like, it sounds like a similar challenge, right? So now we're back in school and it's a different amount of how do I, how do I build new muscle or different muscle? I haven't had to build over the last year and a half. So I don't know if those are, those are programs or supports we've considered in this process. But it seems like it's a similar, like the opposite side of that coin to me on, on how do we help build some of that skill? That leads me to the second comment sort of question, which is, it's kind of interesting thinking about it, middle school, about the like web leadership and student leadership in the building. And how really our most senior student leaders are now students that weren't in the school for the last year. And when they were, they were the least mature in, in the building. And so I do wonder how that dynamic plays in kind of self-student regulation in the, in the middle school? And is there an opportunity either on help and refresher for web leaders in the school? And or leveraging their high school peers who've gone on and were able to be in that more structured environment as a support mechanism? So like, I guess, I put those both on the table.
Yeah, yeah, great comments. It i- it is interesting, as you pointed out, that our, our current eighth grade students, you know, who we would see as our primary web leaders. You know, were sixth graders for not in a complete year. So they're also adjusting back to the school setting. I was able to visit all of my schools within the first couple of days of school and observe the web leaders. And despite their, you know, minimal on-campus experience. It felt to me like those students were ready for that challenge. I attribute that to their maturity, you know, their interest in the program. So, you know, they apply to the program and they have that interest in helping others and kind of taking that leadership role. And then quite frankly, our web leaders helping to teach them and coach them ahead of time about what, what to expect. But it, it's, it's, I, I think one of the things that you articulated, Director Millings, is in, middle school is a three-year timeframe. And eighteen months of that left, you know, went remote. As compared to maybe elementary, K five or high school with four years. So it is a unique impact to lose fifty percent of your in-person time, whereas other levels didn't. I think there's opportunities there. I was actually speaking with a principal today about that exact thing. About continuing to leverage web leaders throughout the school year and how to kind of build that, that culture of leadership. In my opinion, there's no substitute for in-person learning. And that daily affirmation of appropriate and positive behavior is critical and helps build that. So, yeah, I mean, there's no doubt in my mind that we're playing catch-up ball and we continue, we will continue to play catch-up. Probably for the next year or two. I take solace in the fact that I, I really truly believe our kids are resilient and they will step up and rise to the challenge. I just think it's going to, it's not going to be as quick as I would certainly hope, but they'll get there.
I, I, I would though, I guess, on a very practical, after that. Like I would, I would really like to understand if there is an opportunity back to that executive function piece. If there's something practical that can be, be put in place. Because while I believe students are resilient, you know, there's only so much headspace, right? That they have, there's only so much operating space. And when you also lay in, in that same conversation, taking the SDQ and the SBA. In additional to being back in school and dealing with their social issues. I do, I do believe we're maybe past that.
Yeah, we're full.
That headroom that we were looking for. So I think if there's something we can do on a very practical level, that that would be great.
And I think that, that's very good feedback, leveraging the social, emotional time, which depending on the school that you go to, that can bulldog. Bonus time or charger time or what have you, leveraging that time and continuing to teach and reteach is critical for that. Because I agree, the bucket gets full and we have to be able to manage that or sort that out. We've added some additional classes, kind of with the idea of executive function in mind. That are kind of study skills classes to help really facilitate as an elective for students that need, you know, extra special attention at that level. I think leveraging at the social, emotional class time level though is something. And I've been in discussions with my principals that this is the year, if there ever was a year, to teach, reteach, teach, reteach. Because exactly right, kids are going to get stuck. I mean, it's easy for us adults to get stuck too. So, yeah, good feedback. Thank you.
Anybody else have anything for Jason? We've kept you on the hot seat for a while. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jason, and certainly give our best to all those middle school leaders out there and everybody who's doing their darndest to make a good experience. I did want to invite our Executive Director of Business and Operations, Martin Turney, to come up and talk a little bit. Also about Martin's kind of our point person with all things Vaccine Clinic. And, you know, we, we've spoke quite a bit earlier tonight here about the importance of the vaccine. And we believe that has been a critical layer of our mitigation efforts. And I'm so thankful that I'm in a community that has embraced the vaccine. And I think it, the, the results of our low COVID in our schools and our ability to keep kids in school is a big part of that. And we want to take advantage of the next opportunity for vaccine because we know it's out there on the horizon. We all read and hear the same news that the child vaccine approval is, is, is being considered and pending. I, I, I did hear something just earlier this morning that told me that there might be a, a, a phase of the review that will happen in early November. So it feels, I do feel like they kind of pushed that out just a, first it was way out, then they brought it way back and now they've pushed it just a little bit. But we are, I, I just want everybody to know that, that we are doing everything in our power to move forward as quickly as we possibly will be able to. With the Vaccine Clinic for our eleven to five-year-olds in our system. So Martin, if you have any updates and that front?
Thank you. So as you mentioned, recently word is that there could be a likelihood of CDC, that final approval being the first part of the first week in November. Which is encouraging because now we're getting closer and closer, which is exciting for five to eleven-year-olds. So we are partnering with. So, um, we are partnering with Costco, as many of you know. And so they believe they'll have the opportunity to have the pediatric, um, vials in advance of that, if that is the date that ultimately gets approval. So that's good because that means they would have it on hand and holding until, uh, that authorization comes through. And being able to mobilize within the same week. So if it does happen that first week, we're feeling confident that we can put on a clinic that first week. We're also clearing and reserving the second week of November in case it gets delayed. The way the timing will work for that is that three weeks from the first week of November is the week of Thanksgiving. So there's a conflict there. Three weeks from the second week of November is the week after Thanksgiving. So we are, we are looking at that week right after Thanksgiving is when we would give the second dose either way, whether it's the first or second week, uh, where this happens. Um, so again, as I like to continue to mention, all of this is up in the air right now. None of it's definite. Um, but we are looking, uh, kind of observing in that first week of November. Uh, Director Montalvo's been great about, um, preparing the logistics and preparing this building, getting things ready to go and stored on site so that when the time comes, we can easily get it out here and, and set it up. And then I want to thank Executive Director Sivadassan, who has reached out to the Isaacus Schools Foundation recently. They have committed to some volunteers and some nice little goodie bags for the kids to get them excited. Uh, she's also working on, uh, the possibility of a shuttle. So those who can't make it down, we can potentially shuttle them down here to get those, uh, shots and also having translators on site. So, um, we're, we're trying to make sure we cover all the bases. And, um, yeah, I think that's the, the latest.
And I know, um, Martin, that we are talking about using this facility because it allows us, we have multiple rooms where we can have rooms for the 15-minute recovery or observation period after the, um, vaccination is administered. And that we also, and I appreciate the efforts of our, of our folks in the elementary world as well to try to create a, a more friendly kind of welcoming environment. We didn't, let's be honest, we didn't give a lot of thought to that when we were jabbing the arms of our employees and one another here. And, um, I say one another because Dr. Gallager physically gave some of his shots. And, uh, but, and that was all appropriate, just to be clear for the podcast, he is a doctor. And, um, and just making it a, a more, uh, child age-appropriate experience, if you will. So I, I love that, all the thought that people have given to that.
Director, uh, Montalvo's actually, uh, working on getting some mascots on site. Uh, we, we have ample, uh, uh, screens for movies we're going to try to play.
Yeah.
And do as much distraction as possible.
Yeah. Hopefully the kids and the parents will appreciate that. I know there's a question.
Yeah. Um, I actually have one too, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go first. Um, are we, and I know we don't have a final date yet, which makes communication tricky, but are we putting communication out to parents so that they know that this is coming? So that they know as soon as this gets approved, you will be able to have your kid vaccinated at ISD?
Yeah, I'd start the conversation with Executive Director, uh, Ingles about, uh, the timing of that communication and potentially, uh, being more of a, here's this, here's the targets, save the date. And here's when we're going to let you know when there's actually a reservation site to go and sign up for.
Cause I just don't want to surprise people.
Absolutely.
Right.
Yeah. So we are going to work on communication.
Yeah. And then my second question is, um, because I know we were talking about three, three and a half days of vaccinations. Do we have a backup plan if for some reason demand was so high that that wasn't enough? Or are we just assuming that will be enough?
Well, and actually, so I'll add my question as a part of it, is what, uh, number of students or children do we think we can get through? In the amount of time that you are thinking we're going to have the vaccine clinic? And then the extension of that would be if our demand is so great, could we extend and have more days?
Yes. So I will, I will start with the hypothetical. If there's a timeline that allows it, we would run a Wednesday from two to eight. We run a Thursday from four to eight, Friday from four to eight, and then a Saturday from eight to two potentially, which could get us between 1,800 and 2,000 shots. In total. Now that's, that would be the, probably the maximum and.
Eight, eight, 1,800 to 2,000.
So that would be a high number. And so once we open up those reservations, we start getting a indication of demand, right? And so what I talked about with Costco is let's open it up, let's see how quickly they fill up. And if they, and if there's a ton of demand, then we're going to look at the following week, right? And then we start saying, if that's something we can, you know, can do and it makes sense, we will just replicate the following week. Um, of course, unless it falls on Thanksgiving or a time when we need to adjust, but yeah.
Okay. And Costco is already, yeah, we're good with that. That's fine. Whatever you want.
Yes, they've been very flexible and, um, the only dates that, you know, they, they don't do Sundays. But, um, it is what it is. And there, even if it was Veterans Day, they'd be willing to do it on Veterans Day. So.
Oh, I didn't know that. That's surprising. Yeah.
Thanks for all the work on this because I know this is an enormous job to plan for something that does not have specific days and everything keeps changing around it. And the things that you're trying to push out of this building potentially to hold those dates. But anyway, I just, I know this is a tremendous amount of work that you guys are doing, ISF is doing to get the volunteers and get everybody coordinated. So thank you very much because I think this will just be really important to get as many of these kids vaccinated. And to the extent we're helped, we can help families do this, this is a great thing. Um, so kudos to everybody that's working on this.
And a big shout out to Costco because they have been just amazing.
Costco's been a great partner.
Yeah. Anne and I volunteered at, um, the last one for the, um, the 12 to 17s. And I, it was just so well organized.
Yeah. And a lot of that was, uh, Martin and his team.
I do understand that, but the Costco people were hugely responsible. And anytime there was a question, they were running back and forth and they were great. So everybody was great.
And Sydney as well. So my question is just around, well, a, a comment, number one, I'm, I'm really excited about this. Um, because I think not only will it help the kids that are at our buildings feel safer, those families feel safer, our staff feel safer. I'm hopeful that the ones that chose not to come back and are doing remote will be able to feel safe enough. So my question was around communication to families that are no longer within our district that were last year or the year before. Are we had, do we have a communication mechanism to them?
Oh, that actually, that's an excellent question that I don't know the answer to. So I, I would take that back and see if we do have a way to connect.
Yeah. Uh, I, I don't know if they, if they've actually un-enrolled from our system as a push. I, I hope that they're still watching this space, that they're watching our, our website and, and the messages and looking for our e-news is. But I, I'm like Martin, I don't know exactly, although I do see, uh, Executive Director Ingles just popped on the screen there. So maybe she knows something about it if we can unmute her.
Thank you. I'm trying to listen, uh, Executive Director Turney, just so you know, when you're speaking into the mic, it's a little muffled and thankfully I already know what you're talking about, but, um, you might want to bring it closer or something. So just that quickly. Um, and then second of all, yes, we can follow up. I think one first step in following up is with our community at large. Um, because there are people, even if they're not on our parent enrollment distribution list, there are people that have been moved to the community distribution list. So that's one facet there. And then I can also see if we can pull a data report on students that have, it disenrolled, they're no longer enrolled with the school district as of like the last year and a half. We would be able to pull that, um, contact information as well. So.
Great. Thank, thank you, Alicia. Yeah. And I guess to, uh, um, Director Moore's earlier, um, comments about, you know, there's, there's kind of an excitement a- around these vaccination clinics. You know, we actually, um, through the, the help of Dr. Gallinger started all of this. And I completely concur. It was one of the more joyful experiences of, of my year last year was at our initial vaccination clinic that, that we operated again in conjunction with, uh, Dr. Gallinger helping us get that started. And then the one that we did with Costco. So I, I'm really looking forward to this and I, uh, it, it's almost like a community, um, community experience that we get to have. And, um, I, I just truly appreciate the efforts that everybody makes to do it. It's, you know, it just felt like something that we were doing as a community together that it just felt really good. We're all doing it for one another. So, um, we look forward to the opportunity to get more of our students vaccinated.
Well, and I do think it's tricky with the, the five to elevens, um, because they are younger and vaccinations are a little more scary. Um, and I can imagine that there will be a segment of our parent population that might be more comfortable going to their pediatrician or whatever. The flip side of that is those people are probably going to be really, really crowded. And I think to the extent the work that you're doing with the foundation and using this building to just make it more comfortable and less scary. And I love that the foundation is doing goodie bags and the movies and all that. I just think, um, this is going to be a much less scary experience for, you know, a six-year-old going to the gym at IMS, which is huge and, you know, all these scary people with needles. I mean, um, so I really appreciate the thought that's been given to making younger students comfortable in this process. And I hope, I hope parents feel good about coming here to, uh, get their children vaccinated.
Well, and we've proven we can do this and we can do this well. So I hope that the parents are reassured by that too, that, you know, we're not some, you know, this is a very thought out uh, and careful operation.
So thank you for that, Martin. Any other questions for the board? Okay. You're off the hook.
Thank you, Martin. So that, that really concludes what I had to share tonight as part of the, uh, operations and COVID mitigation updates. So if there were any other questions or public input or anything like that.
Okay. Well, let's first, um, good reminder, let's first go and see if there is any public input. Um, if you raise your virtual hand. I actually have very many Publix. So apparently not. Okay. So I will open it up to the board if there are any additional questions. Going once. Why? Arlen? No, you were just giving me that look.
No, the look was we had two days together with the cabinet. And we spent the first two hours talking about COVID mitigation and, you know, so I just want the public to feel like, oh, why are we not talking a lot about it? Cause we've talked a lot about it this week.
16 hours. Yeah.
Yes.
Good conversation. Okay. No, that's good. That's, that means that we're actually, oh my gosh, we're actually.
Don't say it.
Uh, the next item on the agenda.
We never talk about how many field goals he's made in a row.
Yeah. Okay, fine. We're all very superstitious now. Um, EL eight communications and support, do I have a motion? Anne?
I move the board accept the internal annual monitoring report for EL eight communications and support to the board as presented.
Second.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded. Uh, did you want to review anything with this?
Yes. I, um, the, uh, this EL does have quite a few updates and changes. Uh, many as a result of the interesting year we had last year. Also based on our previous monitoring conversations, I attempted to include somewhat of a historical record of the impacts of COVID nine, uh, the COVID 19 pandemic. If you'll recall, we had that conversation and I, and I completely concur that this is a good place to kind of capture some of this. I thought it would, uh, that I would go through this report and mostly highlight the additions made related to the uniqueness of last year and our efforts to manage through the pandemic and the impacts that it has on our, it had on our ability to provide educational service, um, as we had done, uh, prior to the pandemic. Certainly I'll take any questions or comments as we go through the document. Any questions from the board as, as you discuss this monitoring? So again, I'm not going to focus on every update that's in here. I thought I would, for tonight's purposes, I would try to focus a little bit on kind of what I viewed as some of the COVID-related issues, but I wanted to have, make sure they were captured. And again, this is, um, communication and support to the board. So the superintendent certifies, um, or the superintendent shall not fail to appropriately inform and support the board in its work. So kind of in that general interpretation, just a note, um, down near the bottom that the board is provided with frequent, uh, budget updates and capital and oper- on the capital and operations side. And that those updates, um, particularly on the budget, as we got into the spring, occurred more frequently. And again, that was driven by the pandemic and the reduction in, in enrollment and the like, the impacts of the pandemic on us. And, and then I also noted in the, uh, second bullet there on the, the initial, um, evidence of compliance that, and, and I know the board will have fond memories of all the executive sessions that we got to have last year.
Was it 26, 25? We put it in the Board of Distinction app.
Yeah. Well, um, obviously, um, that was a result of, we had to give those frequent executive session updates primarily on bargaining during the 2021 school year. And again, um, the pandemic and the closure of the schools and then the ability to try to reopen the schools in some fashion led to a lot of collective bargaining and countless, um, memorandums of understanding and letters of agreement. And of course, our, our goal was, is always to keep the board abreast of how those are progressing and, and moving along. So just a lot of executive session time last year, certainly a record during my tenure as superintendent. And then again, if there's anything you want me to stop, I'll just kind of keep, um, moving through. Um, in sub-bullet one, uh, should not, uh, will not neglect to submit required monitoring data um, to the, in, in a timely, accurate, understandable, non-defensive, unbiased fashion. Um, one point of evidence, all monitoring reports were submitted for the 2021 school year. Um, that was a bit of a lift, I will admit at times. I know we, in the previous school year, we had actually had to delay a couple of monitorings and kept, play catch-up over the summer, but we were able to get those all completed last year. Under bullet two, shall not fail to report in a timely manner and actual or anticipated non-compliance with any policy of the board. I will note that in 21, all monitoring reports were approved by the board. Um, EL nine, annual report to the community and EL 14 instructional program were both approved with exceptions um, due to the pandemic as well. So just wanted to acknowledge that. Moving over to bullet three, district, uh, the superintendent shall not neglect to submit decisions, information required periodically by the board or fail to inform the board of relevant trends. And down under evidence there, um, this one is not pandemic related, but, um, wanted to acknowledge that, that last year, the district did create, run a boundary review committee and implement new K eight boundaries for the district. Obviously keeping the board, um, uh, informed of that process. And that was a very public process with a public committee. I provided, uh, data related to COVID-19, including mitigation strategies, impacts on enrollment, budget, staffing, student engagement and remote learning and hybrid learning. We were able to pull a fair amount of good data during the course of the year in all of those areas. Numerous, uh, public communications related to the impacts of the pandemic, including video messages, FAQs, e-news messages, um, all of which were provided, um, the board with the up-to-date and the community up-to-date information on the impacts of the pandemic was having on our school system and information related to the Special Education Recovery Plan. We actually began talking about that last year and the OSPI Academic and Student Wellbeing Recovery Plan. So all of those were things that I had to, uh, be very mindful of last year and, and work to keep the, the board informed. I did want to note a couple of other, I guess, these are outside of the pandemic, but I didn't want to lose sight of them. Our Equity Department also facilitated some conversations with student listening sessions related to school resource officers. Um, the Teaching and Learning Department facilitated, and boy, these things are not easy to do in the hybrid virtual world that they were working in. But the Teaching and Learning Department facilitated, uh, dyslexia parent information sessions. That's an important topic in our system. Communicated information, I had to communicate information to the board, um, about, um, graduations. Um, the fact that, you know, we had a remote graduation in 2020, but that we got back to in-person graduation in 2021. That was a joyful day for, for us back in, uh, June. And then, uh, summer 2020, uh, planning also and 21 planning, uh, team work groups were formed for the, oh, that, this was in the 20, I wanted to just, uh, a reminder that during the summer of 20, all that work that was done for hybrid learning, that then we had to, uh, move to fully remote learning is. all that work that was done for hybrid learning, that then we had to move to fully remote learning as well. Moving through on number four, during the twenty twenty-one school year, the board was notified middle school six, Cougar Mountain Middle School would not open for the start of the twenty twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two school year. And of course, you know, the, the, we, we fortunately are, are neighbors in Bellevue, thank you, were able to lease us at, at next to no cost, Ringdall Junior High as a temporary housing for those students and staff. And so we're very appreciative of that. A note of COVID nineteen impacts to the system's ability to offer in-person learning for the start of the school year. And again, remember, I'm back now talking about keeping the board informed of any incidents, information it requires, including anticipated media coverage, threats or pending claims of lawsuits or material internal changes. Obviously, that was a big change when we had to offer the impacts to the system and our ability to offer in-person learning. A lot of additional COVID nineteen media coverage. Always try to keep and believe I've always kept the, the board informed of any media interviews that, that I do. And I did a lot more of them in the last eighteen months or so. Keeping the board informed of hiring and departure of cabinet members and alignment of the, when I made the assignment change of my assistant superintendent for HR at the time, Lisa Heckman, and moving her to the COVID nineteen response lead for the district. So just keeping the board informed of those types of changes. Moving over for me to, in area six, shall not present information in unnecessarily complex, lengthy form or in a form that fails to differentiate among information of three types, monitoring, decision preparation and incidental. Just a note of evidence here. We have added the, the board to updates on newsletters from several of the departments, teaching and learning, special services and the Equity Department and Human Resources. I know that that's a great way for the board to get information about what's going on as well. And a, a work study that was held on the boundary review process as well. Just, again, I'm just going to kind of continue to move, move through this for us. Not fail to provide a workable mechanism for the official board, board officer or board committee communications. You know, noting that we, we used and got a lot better at communication software such as Zoom, which is being utilized right now. Microsoft Teams were implemented. That was all used to facilitate virtual board meetings and other meetings as a result of the pandemic. Shall not fail to deal with the board as a whole, even when fulfilling the individual request for information. And a lot of times, you know, I'll have conversations with you as individuals. And one example in particular, there was a request for information about K one attendance and by one board member, but when we get that, we just send it out to the entire board. And that, that data was provided to the whole board at that time. Moving to item eleven, fail to establish, and again, I'm not going through every update. I'm just going through. And there's evidence from prior years still, but just the ones, a few of the highlighted ones. Fail to establish a procedure for informing the board in a timely manner of the administrative disposition of complaints presented to the superintendent by the board. And I just wanted to note the district's regulations forty-two twenty, forty-two twenty P, complaints concerning staffs and programs and district regulation thirty-two forty-one and thirty-two forty-one P, classroom management, discipline and corrective actions. Those are tools that I know the board is very familiar with as a way to keep you informed of any complaints or anything that are coming forward. Fail to inform the board. This is item twelve, in advance of any deletions or additions or significant modifications to any instructional program. There was quite a few of those. So under the evidence, notified the board of our shift to remote learning after the closure order that came in March of twenty impacting the instructional program. The July twenty twenty, my recommendation to the school to begin fully remote and the creation of the ISD live. You'll recall our remote program from the first third of the, the pandemic when we were closed. We got a lot of feedback through a thought exchange and through just feedback from the community that they wanted to see more live streaming, more interaction. We created that through ISD live. And, and in fact, I, I still am just amazed at what our staff was able to do because that's not who we are as a system, but I think we did a pretty darn good job of it. Even though I will be the first one to tell you, it's not as effective, in my opinion, as the in-person schooling that we do very, very well. Notified the board of the return to in-person learning for self-contained special education students starting in the fall of twenty twenty. Notified the board of the return to in-person learning of specific grade bands starting in the winter of twenty-one. Notified the board of the return to concurrent teaching models for grades four and five in the winter and spring of twenty-one. And notified the board of the return of hybrid in-person learning for grades six through twelve in the spring of twenty-one. Probably didn't want to relive all of that, but you know, for, for the purposes of this, we, I, I had to. But looking back on it, when I think about the fact that on the twelfth of March in twenty, we were the Issaquah School District as we've always known it. Then we became a remote school district and it was a hurried and rushed remote district, to say the least. You know, trying to determine how we could deliver remote learning, tens of thousands of computers being issued out to students and hotspots and the like. Teachers identifying essential learnings, figuring out the technology. And then all the other iterations, the improved ISD live system, followed by how we were able to bring back our self-contained students first, followed by our youngest learners, followed by, and then remember, we had a different model for grades four and five. And then yet again, a different model for grade six, twelve. But all of that happened in a way to provide schooling so that we ended last year with about half of our students attending in person. And it's some in the lower grade levels, better than half. And we were able to, as I noted earlier, do some really positive things like having in-person graduation and hold sports and things like that. So those were the biggies that I was, updates in this, this year's monitoring of EL eight and I'll just take any questions.
Okay, do I have questions from the board?
Sorry, I actually don't have a question. I just noticed in this review that there's a, there's one typo.
Oh.
That we probably.
Where, where are we at? Because we can correct that before we post it.
In the very first section, after the initial interpretation, evidence of compliance, the second bullet, it just says that I joined the board in March of twenty eighteen, but twenty nineteen.
Oh. Stand corrected.
Because I was like, why would I take the training a year later? And I was like, oh, I wasn't here. So sorry, I didn't catch that.
We caught that. Thank you.
Yep.
It just feels like you've been here forever.
Yes.
Any other questions, comments?
Well, I was going to ask. I remember last year getting these, I forget what you call them, like the, the departmental updates from like the Equity Department. I don't think I remember getting them so far this year. Am I just missing the email? Oh, yeah. I wonder if we got dropped off in the year.
Yeah, you, you shouldn't. I, I know that TLS, and I don't know how many they've done, to be honest, at this point. I can, I can go back and check. I always encourage the departments, if they do a newsletter, the one that I don't think I've had that you've been getting copies of, which is brand new this year, Executive Directors Mundell and the, the elementary team has, and Melinda Reinvan have started a newsletter. And I don't believe the board is on that CC line yet, but I'll look into that. And I know that there's been an equity update, did you?
Some equity one. Oh, see.
Well, let me go back and double check and just make sure, because I think if you, those are good for you to get if you.
Right. And what would help is maybe make a list of the types of groups that would be sending them to us and about how often they send them. Not in exact, but I think if they send things out quarterly or monthly.
I'll do some follow-up because I know there for a while you, you, because I made sure that you were getting the TLS one. And there may be that there hasn't been one yet. So I want to be clear about that.
Know if we're just, we're no longer getting them.
Yeah.
Or they just haven't come yet. Or it could have come at a time where we got so many emails that I lost.
Got buried in there.
See it.
There was that.
Yeah, I can certainly follow up on that because I know historically, I think TLS was the first one that started doing them. And, and I remember back when Emily Hard was still there and I said, gosh, I think this would be interesting to the board. So had, had the ISD board account included in those. So yeah, I will make sure that you're getting those because I do think that they can be, you know, I know that you all get a lot of e-newses and stuff, but sometimes that's more of an internal document, but I think it would have value to the board.
Anything else? Arlen?
So this is me asking the board for discussion. So go to item two. So shall not fail to report in a timely manner and actual or anticipated non-compliance with any policy of the board. And then when I review the interpretation, which says the superintendent's monitoring reports must truthfully and accurately alert the board to any condition of current non-compliance or condition of non-compliance considered likely in the future and should include a plan for incremental movement toward compliance in a reasonable timeframe, which is why I actually pulled EL nine off. So for my board colleagues, my question is, is what does this actually mean operationally? Like, when would we expect notification of that? And would that be verbally? Would that be written? Would that just be through saying, hey, the superintendent is giving us this report and in it acknowledging there's, there's non-compliance, but not until the time that that report is provided to us the week before our board meeting?
I read it.
Makes sense?
I read it that he would tell us when he becomes aware that he's not in compliance with something. Which could be not until he wrote the report, or it could be six months before he wrote the report when he realized, remember eons ago, oh, you probably weren't on the board. Eons ago, when there was an issue with Skyline and some confidential boxes were, I can't remember, left out on the sidewalk or something. And they sort of became non-confidential. And we were told well before it happened that the superintendent, previous superintendent was not going to be in compliance with, and I now can't remember which EL it is, but assures that we keep records confidential or well-secured or something.
Secure, yes.
Secured, not confidential, it was secured. And that, given that these things weren't secured, it was obvious that whenever the monitoring happened, he was going to be out of compliance. So I would say we would be told when he knows. That's my interpretation.
There others? No one else wants?
But I mean, there haven't been very many instances of non-compliance. I'm struggling with it a little bit.
Yeah, I, I would say to Suzanne's point, I'm trying to think, we might, yeah, we've never had a non-compliance. I think that was an exception.
That was an exception, yes.
So it was mostly in compliance and it was an exception. And that was, yeah, and it was actually the records were destroyed, if you'll recall.
Yeah.
They were moved.
It was during the construction.
It was during construction and they were apparently not sufficiently marked.
That's right.
Do not destroy. And then when the mitigation happened and stickers were created that were clearly stated, do not destroy, the superintendent came back and said, this is what we've done to mitigate it in the future. So that's my recollection of it. Definitely, I think when the superintendent, for any reason, knows that they are out of compliance with something, I think that would be important for us to know.
So which leads me to then the question is, and this may be semantics, but not really. So when you say out of compliance, now when we as a board approve a EL or ends report that is approved with exceptions, that's still in compliance, right? So the only way that a superintendent could be out of compliance is if we were to vote against accepting a report? That's a question.
Or if the superintendent came and said it was out of compliance. I mean, the superintendent could acknowledge.
I guess his point is, is an exception out of compliance or would we have to reject the entire monitoring as being out of?
Yes, you would have to reject the entire monitoring.
Right.
And that's the little sheet that I used to fill out all the time and you'd have a place to be able to check whether, you know, the monitoring was made reasonable, made reasonable progress in compliance or in compliance with exceptions.
We still do that.
We still do that.
Right. And I guess to his point, I mean, you could also interpret that section that, and I realize it says in, or you know, out of compliance, but the expectation could be when there is a recognized exception.
I mean, I think in practice, it has been exception, but the language is actually non-compliance. And we have sent ELs back for further work. But I don't think we've so much, I don't recall ever voting one as non-compliant. I think we've said, we've tabled it until you go back and fix something. So I'm struggling with it a little bit because I can't think of a time that we've said, nope, you're just non-compliant.
No, I don't believe we have. It's either been compliance with exception or you, you need to go back and fix this or that or something else. And then upon re-review, it's been in compliance.
Yeah, I don't know if I'm scratching your itch or not, Marty.
I, I, my feeling is that being out of compliance, like non-compliance, is significant. It would, like in this first one, the superintendent shall not fail to appropriately inform and support the board in its work. If we were meeting our, our guidelines around evidence that we wanted and consistently, that evidence wasn't being brought to us and it was purposeful. I, to me, that's, that's the out of compliance. Is the, is the superintendent doing things in a way to undermine the board? And for, for me, it almost sounds like going to motive. And if it's, if it's broad, so like, it would be pretty broad, broad to be out of compliance with the entire EL or for the overall feeling of the EL, a small exception might be something different. But that's just, that's my take. You asked Mike.
So the number, so for me, I'm going to stay away from the interpretation because the interpretation here is actually a little confusing for me. If I say with district number two, which is shall not fail to report in a timely manner and actual or anticipated non-compliance. To me, that's, that spirit makes sense to me. So you would anticipate a non-compliance or, or something that might lead to an exception. So for me, anticipated non-compliance is there is a trending towards or a potential need for revision or some piece of work. It may not lead to an ultimate, an ultimate non-compliance once the report is presented. So I think the, what's, the way it's written in number two makes sense to me. I think what throws me off about the interpretation is I feel like I'm in a bit of a circle that the report has to actively non-compliance likely in the future. So I feel like the report can't do anything in the future because it's only about the past. So I think for me, number two captures the spirit, I would hope, is there's some anticipated concern, some potential non-compliance, that that would be alerted in a timely manner. That, but that by definition to be timely and ahead of time would not be in the report itself, would have to be in some other format. Some other update format.
Well, I agree, which would then would go in evidence of compliance for the following years. And that, that's why I'm talking about this sort of weird dynamic. And so I want to bring up an example. Okay, so EL one. So, which is a simple, straightforward one. There's no subbullets. The superintendent shall not cause, allow or fail to take reasonable measures to prevent any practice, activity, decision or organizational condition which is unlawful, unethical, unsafe, in violation of board policy or endangers the organization's professional, public image or credibility. And so when I mirror that with what the superintendent's interpretation is, is that the superintendent monitoring reports must truthfully and accurately alert the board to any condition of current non-compliance or condition of non-compliance considered likely in the future and then should include a plan for incremental movement toward compliance. and then should include a plan for incremental movement toward compliance in a reasonable timeframe. So my specific question for the board is, what would our expectation be of the superintendent in that last sentence? And I agree, we haven't had a scenario like that before, but we certainly could have that now.
I think one of the things is that, um, if there was a communication to the board, the board could immediately ask for an emergency monitoring. And then that's when it would say, here's what it is that we're out of compliance. And then he'd be able to be able to do a full one. That would be my anticipation is that if he knew he was going to be out of compliance, notify the board and the board could ask for emergency monitoring of it.
Right, or as an extension, you know, not necessarily totally out of, out of compliance, but an exception to it would be included in that.
Right, so I'm still trying to get down to the, pin the board down into a timing thing. Because I think it's so nebulous, how could we expect any superintendent to follow this, even though it's the superintendent's interpretation? Like, is he a plan for incremental movement toward compliance, something that is presented the week before the monitoring is provided to us? Like, does that come alongside when the report comes? Or?
Yeah.
So that itch hasn't been scratched up for me, to answer your question.
Well, I mean, I still go back to the, the boxes at Skyline, which it was communicated to us when it happened, that it happened, and that it was going to be an exception to a monitoring report. And then shortly thereafter, it was communicated to us that he had a plan, so it would never happen again. So.
And was all of that in advance?
And that was all resolved in advance of the actual report. I can't remember if we did an emergency monitoring of the report or not, we might have.
I think we did, yeah.
So I guess I'm, I'm struggling with what you're struggling with.
So maybe we should have a really brief executive session at the end of this meeting, so I could be more explicit.
Yeah, um, so I think that's probably a good idea. Let me just ask a question about the emergency monitoring since I haven't been here for one. Because what maybe, would the emergency monitoring cover into the current year?
No, would it?
Well, because that's where you're talking about where the non-compliance, when the boxes.
That's exactly what it is.
It was in the current year, and so you weren't monitoring that year.
You're right, you're right, you're right.
He was telling you.
You're right, it would be current year.
You would model, monitor the next year.
Yes, you would be pulling.
Right now.
You would pull a monitoring report forward, so.
Right.
Yeah, you're right, I missed both.
So it is an interesting timing thing. So just sticking with the example on the table, it, if it, if it happened this year, but I'm monitoring last year, it would be that anticipation of, I'm going to be out of compliance when this rolls around next year. Here's why I think I'm going to be out of compliance. And oh, by the way, here's what I'm doing to try to mitigate against that. So yeah, that, it's, it's that weirdness of you're monitoring a year in the rear, but the incident that you're concerned about taking you out of compliance is happening in the here and the now. So it, it may not be reflected in that monitoring, but I can tell you it's going to be in this monitoring. And just as a practice, for me, it would want to be, as soon as I know it and have an understanding of what's happening, to have those conversations. And you know, there are probably times as I reflect back, and I'm trying to think about this, Harlan, that where some of that has actually happened and we've maybe had conversations in executive session or something like that. And we've actually been able to go back and do something that then resulted in us either not being fully out of compliance or just having an exception. Never having one be fully out of compliance, but it could certainly happen. And I, I mean, I just want to be a realist about this, whether, whoever sits in this chair. The other thing that, and I don't know if this was in the, the minds of the board when this was all being created or the Carver group when they were creating these models that we used, a superintendent who just says, uh, yeah, I didn't get around to it. So I'm not going to be bringing you that monitoring report. That to me is the most blatant non-compliance.
Yeah, Marty.
I think the other important thing about why the board has a right to bring forward an emergency, monitoring and why it would be in the current year is because that is what's utilized in the superintendent's evaluation. So my assumption would be that typically we evaluate in arrears, but by the end of the year, we, we've talked about, you know, by the end, in, by June of 2022, we will have talked about and monitored the entire 2020, 2021 school year. So if I have a, a superintendent, let's say sometime in the future, who violates, you know, B S L one, so he's going to be out of compliance, calling for that emergency, monitoring would then allow the board, if they said, yes, this is a non-compliance, that would then be in the review for the, for that school year, the year that the non-compliance was in.
And to your point on E L one, I would say that we had that conversation during the retreat.
So I would, I would say that based on the interpretation, which says, and should include a plan for incremental movement toward compliance in a reasonable timeframe. So I'm, I'm not convinced that part is, but, but again, this is about arrears, so I am not, I like, I merely asking my board colleagues the question.
Okay.
Because I, I really want to sort of have a better understanding about it. Because I've never been part of an emergency monitoring either, but I want to know what, because it always seems a bit challenging that we are monitoring what was, what, what happened ago, and yet we're trying to live and, and forward.
Yes.
And so it's that weird tension. And most of the time, it doesn't matter because we're always in a constant cycle monitoring. But there are moments where actually, I think that our policy governance approach can hurt us. That's all. Thank you for the discussion.
Yeah.
I wanted, I wanted to just have a dialogue about that. And it was, it's going to sound the foundation for why I pulled up the next one.
Okay, Marty.
I, I think it's a great question, it's a great point. And I don't know that it hurts us, I think what we need is clarity around it to be able to specify so that, um, we may need more language on this number two of what we, of what we mean. Um, it could be actual or anticipated non-compliance or exceptions, if we want to dig that deep. Or we can say within a timeframe, if we felt that that was necessary. Sometimes it may be just the board determining amongst itself that we feel the superintendent is out of compliance and, and then demand a, a, a re-monitoring of something in the current school year, uh, or current timeframe. And then we may not accept his monitoring report and we find, we may find him out of compliance, even if he says he is. I mean, so we still get to do all of that work. But no, I think it's, it's an important question and the only time we get to talk about this stuff is in our board meeting. So I do appreciate you bringing it forward and having that conversation.
And it really is a board question, that's why I'm asking you guys, it's not even really a superintendent question, except for the interpretation part. Thank you.
I, I would just, um, and, and the board knows that for a number of years, I actually taught a section on policy governance at the, um, in the superintendent's program at, at Seattle Pacific University. From an academic standpoint, this is fascinating to me. I, this is a great conversation. And I think one of the things that we need to remember is that policy governance is at what you want it to be. And it, it has evolved, I've watched it evolve in this district. We don't have to follow any one set model or anything like that. And I, I just think this is a fascinating conversation that will, the more that you all can clarify and, and, and land on a place where there's a comfort, I think it will actually serve me or any superintendent well. So I, I just, I'm fascinated by it. I know it might not be the most exciting thing for those that are out there in the audience world, but, uh, from a technical standpoint, I do, I, I really think this is a fascinating conversation.
And I would argue too, that, I mean, yes, the, the actual monitoring is in arrears and we do have a tendency to talk about the things that happened a year ago. But to the extent that the E Ls provide the, the sort of fencing around what the superintendent can and can't do, I, I go back to the example, um, we used when we taught the W A S T A class, which was, um, changing the high school schedule and the board going back and changing the E L to state that the superintendent could not make significant changes to the high school schedule without approval of the board. And that was something that we changed in the moment and in the moment we had to take a vote. And in the moment, the vote failed. So that's an instance where policy governance is very much in the moment. So works both ways. Okay, anything else on E L eight? So we have a motion on the table, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay, uh, motion passes, E L eight is approved.
Thank you.
And now we move to E L three, which we added to the agenda. And I will start with a motion.
I move the board accept the annual internal monitoring report for E L three personnel administration as presented.
Second.
Okay, it has been moved and seconded. And I am going to go to the board for questions.
Right, thank you. So I will start since I was the one that pulled it off, and thank you for that. So I, I wanted to follow up on a couple of things. So from the retreat, uh, it, we had a conversation about teacher evaluation. And in it, in, let me find out which one it is. It might be thirteen.
Thirteen.
So it says, a superintendent may not fail to assure that the evaluation of all educational program personnel is designed to, one, improve and support instruction, and two, measure and document both excellent performance and unsatisfactory performance. And I'm speaking for myself, but again, bringing it in front of board colleagues, we, in, in other monitoring reports, you bring data on sort of how your principles fall in groups. And my question is, is in broad strokes for our educator staff, that would be helpful information for me to see. I'm not asking for this report.
Yeah.
But it's more about laying the groundwork for the next year's report about, about that. So, because here we talk about it and you, you, you certainly measure it through the Danielson framework.
Yeah.
It just seems like we should report it. But again, I can't ask that singularly as a board member, I'm bringing this to the board.
Right, well, that's where we need our piece of paper, right? Where usually you write that down as, as something.
We have that, we do that.
Yeah, okay, but like that, that's something we want.
Dan's doing that, but they won't do that unless there's more than just.
Oh, no. Yeah, yeah, no, I see.
The idea of it.
Yeah, and, and I think, um, what we talked about at the retreat was, as long as that data was reasonably easy to, to access as a group, um, that we would like to see it.
And I'm.
I will support you on that.
And I'm envisioning it like, you know, this is, this is this job classification, this is the number who were proficient, this was the number that, uh, were distinguished, this was, that number exists in this system.
Right.
And it would seem like a very logical piece of evidence for me to have included in here. So, um, that one, uh, I know is pretty easy to get.
So the question would be, do you want to table this and collect it for last year? Do you want to approve this?
No.
Or vote on it and still get the data for last year?
Why, that's, I don't feel strongly about it, I'm fine for next year. I just was wanting to, this is the time unfortunately when we have to bring it up, so.
I would say if you, if we asked for it, it would likely change, you know, and then maybe bring an edited version of it, would ensure that next year it gets in there because oftentimes staff looks at what has happened in the past.
Oh, and if assistant superintendent would like to chat with us about.
I just think if we at least get the data, then they've known how to render the report and then it'll be easier to remember next year.
And, and of course, not identifiable by individual, just aggregate data.
I thought I would offer this up in your decision-making or discussion around this. Last year's evals were all modified by O S P I. So I'm not entirely certain how valuable that data would be to you. Everyone who was uncomprehensive was, um, brought down to two criterion rather than a full eight. So, um, I, I'm just not, I'm not confident how much use value that would have. It wouldn't match any years before and it won't match this year.
But going forward, yeah, thank you for that reminder, Donna. If it did appear in, as it would in, um, if it was in this year, it would clearly be one of those highlighted COVID impacted.
Very different from any other year.
But in terms of, since you're at the podium, in terms of, uh, because I know I've seen it before.
Yes.
Um, we look at, uh, and I think I probably have only seen it for administrators, but I, you know, for teachers or whatnot, how many were proficient, how many were an overall rank, ranking, not, not on the eight criteria. Distinguished, proficient.
Yes, I am confident we can get that. I just wanted to point out that that, last year is particularly strange and I, I don't know what sort of use value it might have. This year we are back to normal with regards to evaluations.
Well, so maybe then asking for 2019 baseline data.
Yeah, we could put in two, two sets of data potentially in the, the monitoring report. We could have the nineteen, uh, twenty year, which would be the last normal year.
Sort of, it was also impacted, but, so sort of.
Yeah.
Because our closure happened in March twenty twenty.
That's right, but we still had a third of the school year left. So we might have to go back to the eighteen, nineteen year to get a baseline year.
Possibly.
And then, uh, or we can look at nineteen, twenty, and then obviously this year, twenty-one, twenty-two should be, will be a normal year. Yeah, and we can kind of take a look at that. Yeah, that makes a lot of sense.
Yeah.
I'm not sure I was even aware that O S P I changed the rules around teacher evaluation. Or if I was, maybe I was aware and it just didn't register because so much was going on.
In one of those massive updates that we were getting from Lisa Heckman, yeah. And we'll capture it in the notes as well, so that.
It's, and it's in this E L three, it is mentioned there, so it is captured as a change made by O S P I. I just wanted to mention as part of your larger conversation around the data.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I appreciate that because I had completely forgotten.
No problem.
Thank you. And, and just to be clear, thank you for a lot of the work that you did updating E L three as well. This is a real compliance-based E L, as you can see, make sure that we're fingerprinting and background checking and we've got, or we're, we're asking the appropriate questions in interviews. So there's a lot of Donna Hood fingerprint on this, so I just want to acknowledge that. I know it says the superintendent shall, but I rely heavily on the work of my team to help me with this. So thank you, Donna.
No problem.
She might want to stay. So my next question is on number five. So it says, a superintendent may not fail to effectively handle complaints and concerns. And then on the top of page five, you list under evidence, the first table, which is grievances, saying that there were zero grievances last year.
Yeah.
And then the next table, you list complaints of misconduct and there was twenty-one listed.
Yes, those are.
I'm getting my question. And, and then in the first bullet, it talks about of the twenty-one complaints. It goes through saying, one resulted in discipline of certificate staff, three resulted in discipline of classified staff, six complaints involving certificate staff, and one complaint involving classified staff resulted in exoneration of those staff members. The math doesn't add up for me for twenty-one. So what about the rest?
Oh, yeah.
That is very possible that I made some sort of error there, so I will double and triple check. I had to rely heavily on records that I could find on our personnel server, um, to get there. But I will absolutely double and triple check that for you and see what I may have missed. Um, I did ask my team for some support on this one too. The, these are clas, they are formal concerns of misconduct that go through that discipline process. So I may have missed something.
I'm wondering, is there another category? Because this represents, I think, only ten of the twenty-one.
Eleven.
They may have been, is there some?
There might be.
Some lower level than exonerated, I guess.
It is probably letter of direction because that is non-disciplinary. So I, I imagine that's what it is and I, I was certainly working off of the previous report to try to match it. Uh, but I will look, I can certainly look back at older reports too, to see what I might have missed there. But I will look, I can certainly look back at older reports too, to see what I might have missed there. It could be that letters of direction were the last category that were added into that number.
And as you noted, they're, they're considered non disciplinary.
They are.
Probably the most common thing that, well, if that's true and there were ten that resulted in either some form of discipline or exoneration. That means there were eleven that could have been letters of direction.
Very, very possible. That number does strike me as plausible, so I may have misunderstood that that needed to be added in there to make the math correct. So I will, I can certainly double check that and get back to you all.
So that's one that I would want to have the board question whether we want to table this or accept it without that. Or I, I don't know what the purview of the board is, but that is an important piece of information for me.
Okay.
Going forward.
I have no problem tabling it till the next meeting, but this is where my Robert's rules of order get a little fuzzy. And I look at Marnie because I know she's going to know what to do.
But, and others may not, others may want to vote, and that's fine, too.
No, but I'm, I'm saying, Marnie knows the process we have to go through to make the suggestion. Do you have any other concerns?
I do.
Yep, well, then why don't you?
It might, it might, as we go through, it might be that we're going to be coming back with this one anyway. So that's.
So why don't you keep going?
I'm number twelve. This is my last one. And this links to the conversation that I kicked off for why I brought up the conversation about the last E L. And then referred to E L one. So twelve says, a superintendent may not fail to, consistent with the superintendent's own evaluation, evaluate all employee performance according to their contribution towards achieving the board's ends policies. And their compliance with the board's executive limitation policies. And so the interpretation says, I interpret this to mean the, that employee evaluation instruments and procedures must be aligned with the board's ends and executive limitations policies. And these aligned forms must be on file for all employees. And I think for me, the interpretation I would probably reject as insufficient. Because yes, I want compliance, but compliance doesn't mean just a form, an employee form. That it's, it's more, it's more than that. So it's following the policies that are consistent with what the board has outlined in the ends and E L's. From both compliance standpoint, behavior standpoint. Accountability. So I'm not sure that that interpretation meets my needs and I meet the needs of the boards. But that is something that putting it all together for me, it feels like it doesn't match.
Okay, so letter of the law, it, the policy governance law is that the board accepts any reasonable interpretation from the superintendent. Now, we have generally in the ISAC policy governance world, worked much more collaboratively on interpretations. So now I'm kind of looking over here to see if that's a reasonable thing, if you think that's a reasonable thing for your interpretation.
Oh, yeah. I mean, and first of all, I take, just know, I truly appreciate these conversations and this. If this will help us be better, then, then I think that's, that makes a lot of sense. This, and to Harland's point, this has been approached as very much a compliance document a long way. Now, the second time I've used that word in this just tonight. And if, and it makes sense that it may be the desire of the board to go beyond just compliance. And how did you get to compliance, I guess, is the way I would see that. So I just made a note here as I was listening. And continue to listen to how, and, and I don't know off the top of my head, how I might beef up that interpretation to more align with what I think I'm hearing said here. About. It, to me, it's around this issue of contributing towards achieving the board's ends and policies. And I could say, basically what we're saying is, look, we have an evaluation tool that aligns in essence. But I, I get that there's just, there's not a lot of meat on that bone. I think Marnie's got it.
Marnie. So I would say that I don't disagree with the superintendent's interpretation because it's pretty aligned with the actual statement above. I think what it is, is I'm not sure that the evidence fully supports the interpretation. Because we've negotiated these nationally accepted standards as our evaluation tool. And nowhere in there have we mapped out, which might be an interesting exercise to be able to say. These standards map to certain executive limitations. Or is there something within the contract that says that each staff member, regardless of where they're at in the system. Has just as much responsibility towards those executive limitations in their own behavior as the superintendent does. So when it comes to things like civility or treatment of people, that all of those things, our expectation is that they would do the same type of thing. So I don't think we have that in our evaluation systems, nor do we have it in our contracts. But I, so I'm pondering at how that would be accomplished.
So an example for me would be when we completely revised, I know you have a question, but I want to get back to sort of a tangible example. E L two and E L twelve, and we specifically added equitable grading and homework policies and practices into that. Like, I don't feel like, so my expectation as a board member would be, and just like we have asked for social media training and digital citizenship. And year over year, I've said, what you're bringing to us is inadequate. And to Marnie's point about reasonable progress, what does that mean? In my mind, it hasn't met that threshold. But here, we're just saying, I just need a form, a checkbox, and you've checked the box. And, and I feel that's what it's missing. It's missing that element of like, so what are we as a system doing to ensure that we're actually implementing? Policies and practices and systems that support and align with the board expectations. Just to be, just to give examples.
So I, I think I'm more clear now on the previous conversation about E L one. For me, looking at this, I actually don't have an issue with the way it's written or the, the interpretation. In this case, there's a, I think there is a requirement to ensure that all are evaluated, it's, evaluations are done in a consistent way. There's a form and that having a compliance process to check that I actually think has value. Where it becomes interesting is the previous conversation when you tie it to, if within that evaluation, the substantive piece of that evaluation. Were to highlight a lack of alignment with the overall ends, I would expect that there is an alert process to understand that and steps to correct that. Particularly if it's in a material role or material functions. So in this case, the way this one is written, I actually don't have an issue with that, but it does beg the question that for this to work. Then there has to be a more, not say it's not dependable, but. A real time alert system where through that evaluation you find deviation.
Right. I mean, so this just says that you can evaluate it and you could acknowledge like, oh, they, they didn't meet standard, but I checked the box and did the evaluation part. Does that make sense? Like, it doesn't, it's like, how do we pivot from admiring the problem to actually addressing the problem? And in here, with the way it's currently written and interpreted, we're just asking you to admire the problem.
It, it's an interesting, so E L's are about compliance and ends are about reasonable progress. But there's, I, I see how you. This, we get trapped in, yeah, I did. I checked the box. I have, yes, do I have an evaluation process for every employee? Yes. Does every employee have an evaluation tool? Yes. Does every employee get evaluated? Yes. But that's, that's, that's all I'm verifying here.
But does the evaluation pivot according to their contribution towards achieving the board's ends policy?
Well, I mean.
The E L's. And, and we're using that Danielson framework. So when we change an E L, the Danielson.
Yeah.
Doesn't change.
And the interesting dilemma there is that we are mandated to use certain evaluation tools. So we can't create our own that would align better with our own E L's, if you will.
Right.
I do think that, I want to be clear, I think there's a tremendous amount of alignment and because I think that, that work was done intentionally like that. And when you look at the Danielson framework, for example, which is the basis of our teacher, I think that there's a lot in there that feels very comfortable to us and aligns with. You know, the goals of the board. But, you know, it's not, th- these systems were not designed specifically for us, for the ISAC school district. You know, these are state systems.
Well, I was going to say, it, it's really what it's about is, is how does the Danielson framework align with achieving the board's ends and executive limitation? Right, this is about evaluating all employees. It doesn't say what you do with them after you evaluate them. But I, but I also believe, and so I don't know how to embed that in there, but the expectation that we have seen is. You know, when you have low performing staff, we have seen, that you see through evaluation systems, we have seen you take action. To rectify that, either by correcting it and they become better teachers or staff members or whatever position they have. Teachers, or maybe that's not the right place for them to be. So, so we've seen you take action on the evaluation.
Non renewals.
That you have. But so, but it, there is that piece of how does this framework align with the ends and executive limitations? And that I don't, I couldn't, I wouldn't know how to speak to.
Marnie has a question.
I'm sorry, Marnie.
So it's interesting because I really think what this is revealing to me is what does the board actually want? And what can we actually get? Right? Because there's labor laws in place. To which even if we were to say, I know this employee is completely out of compliance, they, there may be labor laws associated with their contract. That doesn't let me do that. So they might deny to do something around our equity work. Or they may, you know, call children by names that aren't kind, you know, and it, who knows? I can tell you, eat their snacks. It's happened before to my child. Those kind of things, completely out of compliance and can I do anything about it? And so that's really about, I don't know if we could, so is it up to us to really can make sure? And we did this with the equity work. We made sure that, that superintendent had the ability to come back and be in compliance. So now I'm looking at this going, I'm not sure we have an executive limitation section. Under which he could actually be in compliance. And then that gets you into the whole, what do we really want with it?
And, and just to be clear, like, I really support the Danielson framework. So in my other life and my other community, and when we were going through selecting, through that T P E P process. And I think of the three, I think that one is great. So I, I really think that that is a very structured way to be able to do that evaluation. I just think that this, again, just says, did you do the evaluation? Just like you said, you're like, yep. But it's more, but what if that evaluation doesn't actually meet board ends and E L's? And there's nothing in here about that.
But, but then back to the point of we are using the framework, so we can't really, we can't change it.
There, there are some outcomes. There are some outcomes from the framework too. So if a, a person is not meeting standard. There is a process whereby a person can be evaluated out of the system. And it results in either termination or sometimes a person may choose to resign because they've decided this isn't a good fit for me and I'm, I'm not really wanting this pack, this career path anymore. So that does happen and it's, it's a pretty rigorous process and we do, of course, honor due process through that. So that the staff member is fully made aware of the concerns as we go. And I'm reminded, Chris Burton used to use with us a sort of fork in the road visual metaphor that was very helpful. There's really two paths. So there's that evaluative path. If a person is not performing to standard and we can go that route. There's also, and we kind of heard comments of, and examples of both, there's the misconduct path. Where perhaps you have violated district regulation or common workplace professionalism norms. And we can go the misconduct path. And that too has a due process to it. And progressive discipline might apply depending on what we learn through the process of investigation. So those two things do happen. But I, I think part of the, the concern here, the question here is, is where are the sort of totals for that? So that's where the, the concerns about misconduct are represented there. And those were all not the evaluative path, but rather that misconduct fork in the road and how they resolved. But I hear a request too for that data around where did the evaluation piece land? How did people perform? What are the totals there?
And with regard tying it back to E L one, what I'm most concerned about is from the level of administrators from principals or assistant principals on up. And, and that's where my concern is because that's where they have the most forward facing impact. That, that parents see, engage with. And really feel and have a feeling about, strong feelings in, in either direction. And so I think that's, that's where I feel like we do have the ability to act or intervene or how, whatever we want to use. Because is there any administrator from the year, from the principal on up that is on more than a year to year contract?
No, only one.
Okay.
But by law.
Right. So, so that's what I, I wanted, like, so I feel like we do, I may understand your point about the labor laws. But for, at least in my mind, from what are the most impactful people in our community, the principals on up to superintendent. I, I don't feel like this scratches it for me. That's all. I, this really wasn't intended to be about teachers. I think the Danielson framework is, is used with fidelity in our district. I think that our administrators do that very well to identify, now I don't have the data, just somebody will get the data. But I, from everything that I've heard over the six years I've been here, I have great confidence that that is used effectively to have our teachers be their best selves.
I do.
Marnie.
I do think I would be interested in knowing those for those if it was a really. I guess, is there some way to be mapping our executive limitations to the Danielson framework? Or to whatever summative evaluation that staff members are going through despite their level to really start mapping. You know, hey, in Danielson, it talks about this parent communication or parent interaction. And we might have, you know, our equity E L is going to have some stuff that they're either, you know, if they're doing well in that. Then that even more promotes our executive limitation. If they're really poor at that, we can also sit back and go. Not only is it poor according to this standard, see how it doesn't meet our executive limitation around X. So I would wonder, and I don't expect this to be sung soon, welcome to the job, here's a thousand things and we'll add one more. But some type of mapping of these evaluation systems back to our executive limitations or, or at least our ends. To be able to say that, yes, we know that, how the Danielson framework maps back to our ends. As opposed to, we think they do and we do them.
Or alternatively, where our ends and E L's fit within the Danielson framework. Sort of like when I S F figured out which of our ends, all their programs fell under. And then figured out, oh, wait, there's a big hole here.
Yeah. Something like that would be interesting.
That would be interesting.
Not due tomorrow.
Yeah.
Thank, thank you for that. You have no idea. I appreciate that.
No, because that would be, that's not an insignificant thing to do, but it would be interesting.
Well, I, I, I would even go a step further, not that I'm, I'm not proposing this because time is a scarce resource. But to do a process like Director Muraldo was just saying. On a complete review of our, all of our executive limita, all of our ends policies actually. And see, are they aligned in the way that we would want them to be in twenty twenty one? With the evaluation systems and the procedures and practices of the district. It's just a really big job and I think it's something, a, a really high functioning school board and an amazingly high functioning team. Could get in a room and pound it out within, you know, a few weeks or a few hundred hours of work. But I think you really could create an amazing policy governance aligned system. But I think you really could create an amazing policy governance-aligned system. That hasn't happened here. I mean, let's be honest. These, these are modified Carver policies that have been modified over time. A few have been added. There wasn't an equity one, there wasn't, you know, you'll recall, we had an instruction one, we got rid of it, we brought it back. There's been some things like that over, over time. Um, I get that this would be a, this is, would be a massive work um, project. But now I'm back to that academic side, and I'm thinking, this would be, I, I, this would be, this would be something that a Carver consultant or somebody, you know, might be able to lead us through. We weren't real happy with what we had, you know, many, many years ago. I know probably it's changed a lot. But um, just for me, you've really activated my, my intellectual brain around all of this. When I'm not busy running a school district, I would love to spend some time on something like this.
You got that in recording for us, yeah?
Yes, Harlan had his phone out.
I, I think, uh, that sounds like a great outcome. I think the outcome that would be very satisfying for me out of this discussion, because it does really get to, one of the things for me that I, I think about all the time, particularly right after school board meetings is, you know, for me, the monitoring in arrears is important, but it is also slightly dissatisfying, if I'm honest for me. And so I think the piece that we are getting to is, in the current state of operations, do we have agreement by which we will identify, act on, and plan for resolution of items um, that we know aren't aligned with, with our governance policies happening in the now? And so if there is work we can do on that, which is, what is, what is a good notice period of those things happening now? And um, you know, what does plan for, plan for, you know, being in compliance or toward compliance look like in the year? I think that would be a, a really important place to spend some time.
Okay. So at this point, I have a motion on the floor, which we can vote on, or someone can make a different motion. Your call, people.
Well, did we, well, on the one hand, we were looking for the data, and we figured out that we probably couldn't get.
We were still looking about the complaints, the 21 complaints where we only have 11 results.
Piece that didn't add up.
So I move, we lay the question on the table.
Or would you like me to withdraw?
No, this is probably the cleanest.
Okay.
But you could second my motion if you felt like it.
Okay.
I second it. Okay.
Okay. It has been moved and seconded to, how did you say that?
What is it, what, so I know what, what withdrawing motions mean.
Yes. Lay the question on the table.
So, right.
So that, is it dead or is it, okay, so then if we want to come back to it at the next meeting, we need to start over.
Back on the agenda.
Okay. Okay. So it's like withdrawing, but it's stronger.
I guess.
Okay.
Sorry, guys. Thank you.
No.
Oh, I don't have a problem.
That's okay. Uh, so it has been moved and seconded to lay it on the table. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. So um, agenda planning folks, we will um, bring this back next, next meeting.
I'll, I'll work with the team, see, get a sense of, one, solve the one problem about why the numbers didn't add up. Look at uh, potentially, maybe even getting some of that back. I think what I heard too was a focus on the admin evaluation data, uh, less so than maybe the teacher or the other job classifications. Um, so we'll take a look at that too. And we'll go back and we'll, we'll listen to the conversation as well. And then I'll, when, when.
And I think the whole mapping the ends and ELs to Danielson, probably not for the next meeting.
That's gonna take a little more time, and you know, I am still fascinated by this idea. I think we could create this amazing 21st century policy governance school board um, work. But I think that that's a big work product.
Remember way back when we had that doctoral student come in and do a whole bunch of stuff with our policy governance, and we needed doctoral students that'd come in and say, oh, that's a cool project.
And do this, uh, gradus, and yeah.
Yeah. There we go. Problem solved. Okay. And now I am totally, I'm totally lost. Hang on. Um, okay, we did that, we did that, we did that. Oh, legislation. All right. Um, Harlan.
Uh, so we are gonna calendar uh, two meetings, when we get to calendaring, with our 41st folks. So I will ask for people to help me there. And then, in the meantime, I wanted to just, I'm gonna share screen on, we got a response to the letter that we sent to Superintendent Reckdell.
Yes. It was somewhat unsatisfying. I interpreted, interpreted it as nice try, but all that money spoken for. Thanks for playing. But that could be a little cynical. Yeah.
Yeah, I'm trying. Okay. So is it broadcasting this letter?
I don't know. I don't see it. Of course, I could find it.
Okay.
Oh, there we go.
Okay. So, you know, I think it was a bit, I'll use annoying as the nice word. For, let's say, the intention of this letter is to clarify the disposition of ESTR funds, and then later mentions that you know, or earlier, mentions that there are some erroneous assumptions that we made. But doesn't actually say that our data was wrong, because we use OSPI data.
Oh, bless you, Stephen.
What he failed to mention is, is that this 10% set aside, and that the legislature essentially allocated 5% for all these different buckets of work. He fails to mention that Isaquah essentially gets zero of this. So it's, it's an intentionally misleading response to make someone who gets this, like the Seattle Times, for example, say like, oh, what is this a complaint about? They got these buckets of recovery dollars. So, uh, our business office said that of this $90 million that is listed here and with rainbows and unicorns, that maybe we're gonna get $50,000, and that would be for our age 22 students who are
Transition.
Doing the transition services.
So we don't get anything for dual language or.
No. So, so, you know, he wants to talk about how important disaggregating data is, and yet provides these aggregate numbers that actually don't demonstrate that Isaquah continues to get zeros. And so, I just wanted to highlight this, so uh, you get a sense on how I believe that we will, I will respond to say, thank you, but I want you to provide us, of those lists, all those lists, please tell me the Isaquah School District portion. Because you have, over years, said how important disaggregating the data is. This is a ti- a time for you to actually demonstrate that.
Yep.
And the second thing is, is that, that there is still the 5% of ESTR $3 that is set aside, the $93 million uh, for uh, reallocation. And lastly, they haven't even received the ESTR $3. So in theory, with legislative action, they could reallocate if they so chose. And wanted you guys just, on your free time turf, federal recovery dollars turf? And see what some school districts are doing with their extra federal money, because they can't spend it all. So the athletic remodels and renovations that are happening, just, just to get a sense on all the stuff that is happening that we don't even have money to pay for all the work that we're doing, and did, just purely for the COVID mitigation part. So, that's the first part of legislative.
Well, I just wanted to highlight something else, that he specifically says, "we," we meaning OSPI, is choosing to fund projects, programs, and services in partnership with educational service districts, community-based organizations, and schools that address this intent and focus on disproportionately impact, or services for students furthest from educational justice, many of whom have been disproportionately impacted by COVID-19 pandemic. That is the same exact allocation model used for the rest of the ESTR dollars. The whole point of the, this 5% is to make up for where that, for where that modeling based on Title I dollars was not effective. Not to double down on it.
Which is why I, I think that we need to identify from OSPI what districts got this money. Because if it's then additive that the districts that were getting $5,000 a student, then got more of this money, that's hugely problematic. And I think that's something that the legislature needs to have visibility upon. And so, that is gonna be the focus of our conversations with the 41st next, over the next two weeks. So I wanted just to make sure we're all updated on the same page, and that you have a understanding about the direction that I'm headed as I do this legislative advocacy, because this response was wholly misleading. And if you saw the lottery list of who he responded to. So this is what really inspired me to get the 41st scheduled.
But do you have the data that you need from the district to
I do.
Contemplate anything that you need to go into those meetings?
Uh huh. So it's, if we go to, there's nine bullets. The first one is zero, the second one is zero, the third one is zero, the fourth one is zero, the fifth one is zero, the sixth one is zero, the seventh one is zero, the eighth one is less than $50,000, and the ninth one is zero.
Yeah, I, I haven't seen my summer school learning loss check yet, or my after-school learning loss check. I keep looking for it, but it hasn't arrived.
So he's basically saying that, yeah, it was all allocated according to Title I, that really wasn't fair. You should reach out to the feds on that, but we're gonna allocate the rest of it the same way.
Right.
Cool.
So, and, and I just think it's important for people to understand too, and I so much appreciate the advocacy of this board and the fact that our ledge rep and our president wrote this letter. We're not the only district in this boat. There, there's, there's another approximately, you know, 12 to 14 districts that are in this boat with us. And I've reached out to some of my colleagues, I've shared your letter with them and, and asked them to share your letter with their school boards. Um, because thi- this is, I, I'm sorry, this is kind of outrageous. And, and even as you go deeper into the letter, and, and they talk about the sorts of things, those things are happening for our students too. My students are suffering, we, what, we heard it tonight. We, from mental health and learning loss and a need for uh, recovery. And again, I'm not asking for any money from any other district. I worked in a district, uh, two districts frankly, that had very high free and reduced lunch rates. I have not always worked in East King County districts. So I understand the challenges they face, but to imply that we don't face any of those challenges of a pandemic, I think, I, I said it at the time when the feds were heading down that train uh, to distribute this money based on title formula. We got zero response back on that. They went ahead and did it. And so, you know, I, I hate to say it, but it just feels like deja vu all over again. It feels like prima clary time. Here we are. The, the perception is, oh, those people will just take care of themselves. Well, w- we can't do that. And I don't think legislators want us to have to riff teachers and employees again. Um, and I, I hope that they didn't think that ESTR pandemic relief money was, would be appropriately used for things like field turf. I'd like to just give some relief to my buildings with contact tracing and the monitoring of uh, uh, you know, the, the implementation of our testing programs. I mean, I don't know, I guess we'd struggle to hire people too, but I'd at least like to have the opportunity to try to provide some more relief to my, my folks out there in the field.
Well, and to be clear, we did spend money we needed to spend to keep our students safe. We did take all the actions we needed to take. We did struggle through the loss of enrollment. We still hired teachers so that we could have um, hybrid classes. We did all these things. We spent a lot of money out of our reserve in order to do it. We have a deficit budget now this year. I'm, I'm concerned that even with a levy, we could have to riff again in April. And, I mean, I don't know what we're supposed to do.
That's why this is just important for us to always keep talking about, because with levies in our horizon, like, the conversation is gonna be, we thought you got a bunch of money, why are you asking us for money?
Right.
Oh, that's already the conversation.
I didn't see, maybe this was released when we did this press release to OSPI. I didn't ever see it put on our website, and maybe I missed it. But just, the whole point of this was, is that we were communicating this to our community, that we were sending this letter out. And I might have missed it in, in E-News or on the website, but I don't recall ever seeing.
I'd have to go back. I know we sent it to the Seattle Times and
Right, but the point.
Yeah. Yeah, no, we want our community to know this. I'll have to go back and look. I know that was the plan. Yeah.
Okay.
And then to that extent, if you're writing a letter in response to describe what we really got out of his buckets, we would want that to be going out to the community as well, right? We need the whole conversation to go. And I realize that's, they're complicated letters, but we still need that point out to the community.
Yes. And so I was helping uh, Executive Dr. Angles work on getting her talking points for the responses to Seattle Times. The Seattle Times reached out.
Yeah, I saw that flurry of emails go by.
About this topic. So she may actually weigh in right now. And then I know, that's all I have for local. We'll finish the rest of this in calendaring, and then I, I think that Director Muraldo has some federal stuff to talk about.
Okay.
I was just gonna follow up on the ESTR letter. It was shared in the board recap and draft form on the 22nd, because that's when it was, when we were going over it in that meeting. And then I will need to check, because I don't know if the final draft was ever sent out beyond um, pushing it out to some of the major news outlets. So, that's where it's at, is that it was in the recap after the last board meeting, where it was fine, when, when we were working on it. So.
So I would have loved to see it under the news section of our, of our school website, where we list various things. So as a separate, like, letter to OSPI about ESTR recovery dollars or something.
Yeah. Yep. We can um, work on that too. I was just letting you know exactly where it was, since you guys were looking for it. So.
Yeah, because people who have been following the board are aware of this conversation and are kind of aware of these facts. Um, I would say the vast majority of our community is not following the board. So, um, they're not gonna see it, unless we put it out there.
I do know the recaps have been very, very popular, and they're getting a lot of hits, so that's a good place. So, but it's better to be more redundant, I would say.
I, I would agree. I would agree.
So we'll follow up on that.
Because this is a big deal.
And, and I, just to note, I wasn't thrilled with the way the Seattle Times used the letter in their op-ed piece, you know, if you, you had to get completely to the end of it.
I was gonna say, we were the last pair of drafts.
To us, yeah.
So. Okay, so.
Well, hopefully with, they're gonna actually do something better, maybe. Any idea?
Oh, she's muted again.
She's still muted. I'm not holding my breath for that, Director Gallinger, just so you know. But hey, we always keep trying.
I will say that when I initially reached out to the Seattle Times with pitching a story, um, obviously there was the one article that brought up the concept, and then we were a very small portion of the story. Um, the reporter that reached out to me this week was a different reporter than who had, who had actually responded to the release initially. So, um, and as I ax- actually asked for additional details, um, which a lot were submitted this evening. So, we'll see. It could be completely different, because it is a different reporter, and this reporter is seeking additional information. So I think that's a good thing.
So there may be another story.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
Hopefully, they're also reaching out to some of the other districts that are in our same boat. It shouldn't just be Isaquah carrying all the water on this. I mean, we know this is impacting like Washington, the second-largest district in the state, Bellevue, another large district, smaller districts, Mercer Island, Riverview. I mean, it does seem to be a bit concentrated in East King County, but not solely. I mean, it does seem to be a bit concentrated in East King County, but not solely. I know I spoke with the Derringer Superintendent, which some of you might not be familiar with. It's a K eight district um in Pierce County out by Lake Taps, also a very high demographic and uh got a very low money. Uh, Kama School District. There are other districts in other parts of the state that that experience this too. So we might need to find some more allies in this fight as well.
Okay, thank you. And then Marnie.
Okay, I had two items. One will kind of coalesce and could kind of touch on this uh issue that we just talked about. So um NSBA has different regions. We are part of the Pacific region. So the uh eight state associations associated with the Pacific region met last weekend. Um, down in Vancouver, it was nice to did a great tour um of some of the facilities down there that they have in Evergreen School District. But one of the things we do is we take time uh earlier this year, I submitted a proposal for basically what's the equivalent of a legislative proposal for WASTA. So um beliefs and resolutions is what that committee is called with NSBA. And it has to go up through your uh region and then up to NSBA. So the region amended and agreed to uh my proposed new resolution, um which states NSBA urges Congress and the administration to better define poverty level level requirements for the free and reduced lunch program by utilizing area median income as used by the Department of Housing and Urban Development or the national median app national national poverty level as defined uh as utilized currently by the Department of Ed. So what it was and whichever is higher, that was the statement because I don't have the amended one. So we wanted to make sure that uh districts that are getting plenty of money where where they have a very low uh median income um that they they were still over the national poverty level, they would still get their funding. But that districts like ours that have a high median income that we can utilize um what's considered for under the housing and urban development, which has a much different percentage range. It looks at 30%, 60% and 80% of the area median income. So hopefully that will go through. So is it? It is a tiny, tiny step in a positive direction. Uh, I'm sure it will take years. Um, but it actually has taken me a while just to get to this point. So I'm happy about that. The next thing I wanted to address, you may have heard, well, I I'll take it back to the last question or the last discussion. Imagine if the superintendent and the board president signed a letter going to OSPI that actually said, thank you so much for our funding. It was wonderful. And the rest of the board is like, that would be an atrocious thing to do. I completely disagree with that. Why didn't you go through board approval? You might be upset. I would say something similar happened two weeks ago on the 29th of September. The C E the interim CEO for NSBA and the NSBA board president without notifying the board, sent a letter to the President of the United States. Which number one, I can't, at what point would you send a letter to the President of the United States on behalf of the board and not get board approval? We did not see it until it had already been embargoed and was going out the next morning. And that means that it actually had already been sent, but you know, it's embargoed. They don't. They won't open it till the next day. Apparently, NSBA worked with the White House for weeks to figure out how to draft this letter. This letter specifically calls out um asking for the federal, well, already did. Um, ask for federal law enforcement and other assistance to deal with the growing number of threats of violence and acts of intimidation occurring across the nation. A local school board members want to hear from their communities on important issues that must be at the forefront of good uh school board governance and promote for free speech. However, there must be safeguards put in place to protect public schools and dedicated education leaders. The real sense is that two things. One, the statement um that local board members want to hear from their communities. Well, no, actually, the communities have a right to redress their issues with the board. It is their that's their constitutional right and it should not be infringed. So I don't think there was enough emphasis on not only do we want to hear from the public, they have the right to tell us. They have the right to come to us, even if we don't like what they're saying. And I think I mentioned that at the school board meeting meeting earlier. We listen whether we agree or not. They have a right to say it. Um, now there has been some violence um or threats of violence. I don't think there's been actually any official violence against school board members. Uh, but there have been threats, but those threats really should start at the local level. And one of the things that NSBA has as its policy is that we are a local control. We are about local control. And that's to start at the local level. And if it's something like it came through the mail, which is then the federal jurisdiction, or it came was a threat over social media that is across state lines, then it's appropriate that federal that your local jurisdiction then says this is outside our jurisdiction and calls the federal government in. For us to kind of do the run around, especially the response by Biden to immediately call for the Department of Justice to look into these um as part of its domestic terror work. Um, that just lit a fire. And it was felt like a bridge too far. And when you read some of the things that they link to in the letter as incidents, some of them are just, yes, there's been contentious board meetings. I don't know why we have to have the feds feds involved. So I wanted to state publicly, I did not see this letter before it got went out. It's too long. It doesn't address the things that it does need to do. And um the initial request was for information, not from an ask, and it didn't go through an appropriate uh board approval. And so I do not support the language in this letter. And I think it is not clear that is really talking about federal federal laws that are being broken when certain threats are done against school board members. At this point, this has caused a lot of consternation. Eleven states have already um state associations have already um denounced the letter. And I'm in discussions with Tim Garcha from WASTA, and it is likely that I'm I have a feeling at some point in the next week, we will do likewise. Now, WASTA and WASSA put out an amazing letter that talked about civility. It was appropriately worded and appropriately does address the issues that school boards are facing. Which is that we've lost it. There's there's been a loss of level of civility in some cases. We had a nearby school district that when they met in person, a 400 person crowd outside was pounding on the windows around the building. That's the kind of call for civility. And I thought it was appropriate. And it also appropriately addressed that we do, we've all taken an oath to uphold the constitution. And I don't think there's a single person here that wants to violate somebody's First Amendment right. We just would like a civil discourse. And frankly, you know, you catch more flies with honey than vinegar. So that's kind of the latest update. I've now been given a public records request that included certain words, including White House. So I look forward to sending them thousands of emails I get from White House Black Market, which is my favorite store to shop at.
Yeah, I mean, I totally agree with you that that letter could have been edited a lot. I do think that the 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 sense of it though was school boards are volunteer public servants. And yes, we people have First Amendment right to come in and talk to us. We listen. It doesn't matter if we agree, we disagree. But at the point that you're, you know, threatening acts of violence against volunteer public servants, that's a little scary. And in some of these communities, the local law enforcement can be a little, yeah, actually, I agree with the protesters. You guys are on your own. I mean, that is, there are places where that is happening. So pardon me, kind of wants to give them the benefit of the doubt because I think as a unpaid volunteer school board member, that would be a little terrifying. And I'm very grateful that nothing like that has not gone.
Yeah.
Would has happened in our district.
And and I am, um, I I think I would agree. Had they left it with just the the Federal Bureau of Investigation, I might have been okay with that. It was the involvement of the Department of Justice and the Department of Homeland Securities and security. And as if the interim CEO hasn't caught on that this is upsetting, he's meeting with the Department of Homeland Security, the FBI, the the Secret Service and the Department of Justice tomorrow.
Okay, anything else on legislation? Good. Okay, I think. Way too many windows open here. Hang on just a second. I've lost the agenda. I think we're at works in progress.
Works in progress. Yes.
Let's go to works in progress.
Uh, and I I will be relatively quick. Are we? Yep, we're still here. Okay. I I just wanted to acknowledge, and I know that most people have probably turned in for the night, but I know a lot of folks watch this uh on the YouTube, the day after and so forth. This is National School Principal Month. And we talked a lot tonight about our principals and the work that they're doing and the challenges they're facing. And I just want to give them again, another shout out of appreciation and love and support for everything that they're doing. Um, we we do our communications department does uh is highlighting principals in their social media feeds on on Twitter. It's kind of fun to
I've seen all of those.
You see a little bit. You learn a little bit about some of the amazing folks that we have out there. I did have an opportunity to personally thank them for everything they're doing and recognize them at the start of our all and been all administrator meeting on Tuesday. So National School Principal Month, uh, give a shout out to your local principal for the great work that they're doing in support of our public schools and our our children. This week also, that's the month, the month of October, this week also happens to be National School Lunch Week, um, which again, our our food service worker, working staff has just been incredible throughout this entire pandemic and post pandemic. Um, the board approved a new collective bargaining agreement with our food service workers earlier tonight. And um, we're just very grateful for everything that they're doing. And uh, I just really, you know, I have to say, even when I was a child in school, I always kind of enjoyed and I know this is an inappropriate term, they're food service workers, but we still refer to her as the lunch lady and uh Mrs. Best in my elementary school. I still remember. So um, totally appreciate the work that those folks, um, Brian and his team do do a wonderful job. Next week is National School Bus Safety Week. And uh, so just please be mindful that school is in session. Those yellow school buses are out there. Um, we have incredible school transportation system in the Isquah School District. I feel so fortunate to have the the amazing folks that we do, but just an opportunity to remember when you see a school bus, you know, be careful. There's children on board and that bus is going to stop and kids are going to be getting on and off. So please be careful around those school buses. And then just lastly, just a reminder to the board that Monday is a non-student day. It's a teacher work day in the district. You learned a little bit that there will be some secondary grading practices work that will be happening. And a lot of other professional development activities will be taking place throughout the district. And so um, looking forward to a good day of learning next Monday and then welcoming the kids back on the 19th. That's all I had for tonight.
And didn't we chat a little bit um at the board retreat around, there was some already this year, some horrendous number of tickets that were issued for um unsafely passing school buses, which had flashing red lights and big stop sign paddles on them.
Yes, that will be part of the messaging that will go out next week is that um um, 100 plus buses, I believe now in the Isquah School District have paddle cameras on them. Um, and shockingly, um, there are people out in our community that go around or pass through school buses when those flashing lights are on and those stop signs are activated. That is a $429 ticket. We will gladly snap a picture of your car and driver's license. And the King County Sheriff's Office will issue that. We don't want to make money off of our bus cameras. We want people to not blow through uh the bus paddle. That's what we're. That's the goal of this program. But you are correct, President Weaver. Um, there's just far too many people violating that and getting tickets.
Maybe we were all at home in the pandemic and the school buses weren't running and we forgot about how to drive and how to drive around school buses. But you know, those lights flash for a reason and oftentimes kids are crossing the street and it's
Yeah.
it's really important that we keep our kids safe. So now we have calendaring, which I also
Announcements and correspondence.
I'm sorry, announcements and correspondence. Um, does anybody have anything to report that is not already um? And that's why I skipped.
I'll just say that the the letter that was scanned to us from a former state senator about seismic um concerns, but I didn't see any of our schools on any of the lists in that report.
It's true.
Right.
Um, just so y'all wouldn't need to scan that if you didn't want.
Okay, so um calendaring. Foundry. All right. Um, our next board meeting, we're fine with the starting time as it was, right? Were we talking about um extending the work study session? And starting the board, the regular meeting at 6:30?
The next meeting.
On October 28th.
October 28th, we were going to change the regular start, the regular board meeting to start at 6:30.
That's what I just said.
Oh, I thought you said we weren't going to change it.
I said we weren't going to change the starting time of the work stu- oh, okay. I said meeting, the work study.
Yeah.
So we're starting the work study at five, but we wanted to have a longer work study and change the start of the meeting to 6:30.
Yes. Do we need to do a motion to do that? Okay, yeah. Okay. So I moved the board, changed the start time of the October 28th, 2021 regular board meeting from 6:00 PM to 6:30 PM. Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that one's done. Now, um the meeting for the the 11th that we changed to the 9th, um, we have a problem with. And uh I would entertain a motion on that one.
I moved the board, changed the November 9, 2021 regular board meeting to November 15, 2021, beginning at 6:00 PM.
Second.
Uh, hang on. Thought that one was going to begin at 5:30. Well, I'm sorry, the regular me- you're right. The regular meeting is at 6:30. It's six.
Yeah, so.
The work studies at 4:30?
Right, that's what we uh had discussed.
Okay.
But that the 4:30 doesn't have to go into this for the work.
Okay, so the motion is just for the six. Got it.
For six o'clock.
Correct.
Yes.
No change to that, just the date. But I stated the time just to reinforce it.
But we are going to just informationally, we wanted to start the work study at 4:30. I'm sorry, did I ask for a second?
I I did a second.
Okay, I got lost there. Um, okay, so I'd say is there any discussion, but I think we just discussed it. Hey, it's, you know, getting late. Um, okay, it's been moved and seconded. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so that one is in the books. So 11:09 is now 11:10. 30. If I don't write things down, I don't remember. Okay, um, and then Harlan, you had some uh legislative meetings that you wanted to schedule?
Yes. Thank you, Diane, for scheduling and arranging these. Super helpful. So they are listed there. So on the 21st of October at 10:00 AM, it's Senator Wellman and Representative Ty. So we will be meeting with Zoom and our superintendent, and I would love another board member to join me as well as Representative Sen on October 28th at 1:00 PM. So typically, we've had just two board members in order to adhere to the open public meeting.
I cannot do the 21st.
I can do the 21st.
I can as well. Look you for it. Or you can do it. Does one of you want to do the 28th or? Oh.
Well, I have a WASTA Board of Directors meeting at 12 on the 28th. And so with Harlan possibly needing to step out of that, I should stay there.
Okay, would you like me to do the 28th then and you do the 21st?
Uh, yeah, I think that'd be good. That's okay.
Okay. Deal. Um, do we need to take action to do those? No, because that's just two people. Got it.
I'll, I'll send a Zoom link out and then if you would mind, organ it to them, uh, because that way we don't have any glitch possible about. That way you don't have to worry about being around.
Okay, so Harlan is doing both meetings. Marnie is doing the first one and I am doing the second one. Is that correct?
I'll be in both as well.
And you, good deal. Okay, um, the rest of this is, I think, informational. The WASTA Annual Conference, uh, is in Bellevue. Thursday, November eighteenth is pre-conference. Friday and Saturday, the nineteenth and twentieth are regular conference. Says students not yet registered. Have we even identified students that might want to go? Or do we want to take students?
Well, I know that's soon because they're just going to go onto the waitlist.
Right, because there's a cap to the, um, attendance.
I think that cap will fall off.
That's what we're hearing that too.
So, but we would still, I mean, I think, I'm sorry, I think a cap will stay. I think it will get higher.
Yeah, yeah.
But I, we want to make sure.
Can we do that if we don't have names? Oh, you have. Oh, we just haven't identified the students then.
Oh, so we're registering.
And we register them in person.
Okay.
Awesome.
Awesome.
And, um. How do we do that? How do we determine what students are going?
We usually, we work through, yeah, we work through the, um, high school office. Yeah.
So they know that they need to do that?
Well, they will.
Okay. If they want to be, sure.
Absolutely.
Um, also. Now, I have. Calendered a meeting on the nineteenth with Isqwa, but is that just Marnie and me?
Yeah, that's, that's.
So that's not the full board?
That's the leadership.
Okay.
Remember, that's the council president and. The other person and the board president.
Okay.
This is the city of Isqwa.
Oh, city of Isqwa. Yeah, yeah. Okay, I just want to make sure because normally that would be on here, but it's not, okay. And then it looks like somebody scheduled elementary teacher listening sessions. Thank you, whoever did that.
Well, and so would we, we need a motion for those.
I would assume that we do.
Oh.
Oh, so you need to confirm with the schools, is what you're saying. But you'd rather we wait till another meeting to.
But you, can you send us the hold calendar invite? Should we just say hold for that?
Yeah, that would actually be really helpful. Because I always forget. Okay, and then we will count, we will officially calendar those at a future meeting. That works. Um, NSBA Conference in San Diego, registration opens soon, so I'm guessing that Diane needs to know who's going. And whether or not we are doing pre-conference. Is that a correct guess?
Yes, that is.
So.
Yes, I'm going.
Okay.
I was planning to go.
I was planning to go as well. I didn't see anything on my first look at the pre-conference that, um. I overwhelmingly want to do attend.
I promise to look at that and let you know.
Well, let me know if you find one that looks good.
Okay.
Um, and that is April first, second, third, fourth, or second, third, fourth, if you're not doing pre-conference. She's thinking.
I, I will also look at it and let you know. But I should go, I mean, the room's something.
You should go.
Oh, yeah.
NSBA conferences are good.
It's a good opportunity.
They are very good.
Better be good.
Those are fascinating.
And it better be good.
Right, and the pre-conferences. Okay, yeah, you should definitely.
Could be some internal NSBA fireworks.
Oh, I know. Uh, yeah. Okay, so it sounds like we're all going. Are you coming to this one, Ron?
Uh, sure. If the, if the board goes, I go.
Okay.
I've only not gone once. I went to the, uh, ASA conference, but it's been everyone that I've ever been.
Yeah, well, I know why. Because you were there. Just kidding. Kidding.
There is a Marriott that is like right adjacent to the conference center. It's almost attached.
Which I think is maybe where we stayed before.
And, and it's, it's pretty, I think maybe if that's available to us, I would recommend that. It sure saves on the walking and it's a big conference.
I was going to say, that thing is long and skinny. It's like two city blocks from one end to the other.
Yeah.
That's actually where the A, ASA conference was that I went to.
Yeah, I mean, it's really nice. It's a really nice convention center. It looks out on the water. It's beautiful.
Right across from, or Nautu Island.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't have strong opinions on hotels, so if other people do, I'm happy to.
If that's still available.
Do that. Um, that is all I have. Did anyone have anything else?
No, there's two things. One for the NSBA Advocacy Institute, since I know Marnie wants to go. Typically, we usually send. One board member without a conversation.
Oh, is this FRN or?
Yeah, so it's, yeah, it's called Advocacy Institute. Now, I'll be going on NSBA's time because we have board meetings around it.
Well, then we can send Harlan.
I would like to represent the board at that conference.
Works for me.
No one else wants to.
Nope, it works.
And would like to is in quotes.
Yeah. Because you have a lot to tell them.
Like.
I, I don't think he's really looking forward to it per se.
That our president delegated to me as the legislative rep when I wasn't here to vote or speak.
It's kind of, you know, would like to.
Show up for meetings.
It's like, I'd like to get my root canal so the pain stops.
Yeah.
Uh, and then I thought we might calendar a Liberty listening session.
Oh, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. I am usually more available than. It's usually Harlan and Sydney that have the hardest time finding calendars on.
Well, I would say as soon as possible, but for me, that's not anytime in the four, next fourteen days.
Okay, well.
Yes, so. I don't blame you.
Oh, that's true, because you have a lot on your calendar.
Um.
So.
Well, and keeping, well.
No, it was.
No, this is an evening.
It was the evening town hall.
The town hall.
Yeah. I mean, I would assume you'd want to do it in the evening again. Yeah.
Yeah, oh, I think so.
So, I was thinking.
And the only thing I'm wondering is November, you're going to run into some of those vaccination clinics unless you do a Monday or a Tuesday.
If I'm not at Liberty.
No, I know, but people might. You know, like last time, somebody said gee, you scheduled it on a curriculum night. I'm thinking, I don't know.
Uh, that's my schools.
Yeah, it, you can't avoid.
That would be disgusting.
No, I know, we can't avoid everything. I'm just throwing it out there. Decide what you want.
So I was thinking November third, fourth, or later. We can't do the tenth because there's the ISF event.
Yes, I don't have that.
So.
Wait. Well, ISF Leadership Circle, oh.
Not the tenth.
Oops.
And you said you can't do the third or the fourth? Is that what I heard?
That's what she said.
What about, did you say no to the fourth?
The fourth is Diwali. Is that a problem?
Hmm, that could be a problem. What about?
I'm not sure how that is celebrated, so I don't know.
What about?
Oh, and the eleventh is a holiday.
Then we're, we're like, what about the seventeenth? Eighteenth was pre-conference.
The seventeenth again was my mother-in-law and my husband's birthday. They'll be in, my mother-in-law will be in town.
Okay.
Okay.
And then we're in Thanksgiving week.
Did you say the sixteenth was out, someone?
I can't do the sixteenth, but if everybody else could. I can't.
Well, you missed, you missed the last one. If I were to miss any, you know, if anything, I'd let.
Right, we did.
Yes, we did.
So that, oh, it opens the ninth, except Harlan, the reason we changed the board meeting was because Harlan couldn't be there. Okay. So, well.
I could do that.
I could do that.
I, I could do that.
Yeah, I might not be here.
The second or the, I like it.
You said you could do the thirtieth. Is that what I heard? Not, not November thirty.
Oh, the thirtieth is fine.
Yeah, thirtieth is fine for me.
I can do the thirtieth.
Yes.
I mean, it's right after Thanksgiving, so we have to promote it before. And then again.
Okay, so Hanukkah starts Monday, but I mean, it goes seven days. So I think you don't want to do the first night of Hanukkah, but.
And we wouldn't want to do the first day after a holiday.
Anyway.
Weekend anyway.
I think thirtieth sounds good.
No, before. It's Thanksgiving.
Oh, no, no, no. I'm, I'm just saying, I would not want to schedule a meeting on the first night of Hanukkah, but I think now we're okay. Because it's the second.
The second night would be okay.
So we're looking at November thirtieth. Um. Okay, so.
Did we start at seven?
I think so.
I think we started at seven November.
Do you want to check and see if the, like, the Liberty Theater is available?
Yeah, somebody should.
Can, can we make our motion that it be determined, to be determined?
Well, and we have another meeting.
Yeah, we don't have to calendar it tonight. Because we need, we need to make sure the facility is.
Yeah, because it, it, it's possible you could have orchestra concert or.
Lots of things.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because you're getting into that holiday season too.
Yes, but given how hard it was for us to schedule it, I think we should find it somewhere in the Liberty Theater pattern area.
Yeah, yeah.
And possibly there's.
Like Maywood would probably.
So we don't ever have to have a location when we calendar. We just have to have the date and the time.
Yeah.
To calendar and then.
I mean, ideally, we would do it at the Liberty Theater, but yeah, Maywood's probably got a space.
Well, or even.
Liberty might have another space.
The Liberty Library is one of our biggest, roomiest libraries. It's about like our biggest open space. So you could. If, you know, accommodate easily with physical separation, seventy-five people, you know.
Yeah, so I, I just think that we should.
All right, so do you want to calendar it with location TBD? Yeah. On the thirtieth? Would somebody like to make a motion?
Sure. I move the board holds a town hall on November thirtieth at seven PM. In the Liberty High School attendance area.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded. Any further conversation? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Cool. So. Yeah, so we'll check on the theater and we'll get back to you. Anything else? Good of the order. One's going twice. Okay. Rejourned.